Good evening and welcome to the January 25 Menlo Park Planning Commission Meeting. We have present with us tonight at 7:03 PM. I neglected to indicate our call to order moment. Tonight, we have Commissioner DeCarty, Vice Chair Doran, Commissioner Cale, Commissioner Tate, and I am your Chair, Henry Riggs. We start out with reports and announcements. Mr. Prada, is there anything to announce regarding tonight's meeting?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Riggs and members of the Commission. So I do have a few updates regarding tomorrow night's City Council meeting. Just wanted to give the Commission an update. The council tomorrow will be concerning the design elements for the Menlo Park Community Campus Pool. So that might be of some interest to the Commissioners here. That was approved by the City Council on January 12th, and now we're going back with some design considerations for the pool at the site. The council will also be considering modifications to the downtown street closure on San Cruz Avenue. That may or may not be affected by the recent lifting of the stay-at-home order, so that may also be of interest to the Commission. And then finally, coming up this weekend, on January 30th, the City Council will be conducting a goal-setting workshop. So that might be also of interest to the Commissioners. That concludes my reports and announcements. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'm sorry, Kyle. The goal-setting workshop is on which Tuesday?
Oh, sorry, Saturday, this coming Saturday, January 30th. There's an info item on tomorrow night's agenda, which includes more information on the goal-setting workshop, and it looks like right now it's going to start around 10 AM. And then it'll go throughout the majority of the day. Probably about 10 to 3:00 or so on the current information item.
They work long hours. All right. Thank you, Mr. Prada.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will-
Chair, sorry, I just got an email from Commissioner Barnes, so he's trying to log in. Just give you a heads up.
All right, thank you. Oh, right. I've had that problem too, usually of my own computer accord. All right, so we will make note when Mr. Barnes can join us, and then for the moment, let us proceed to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the Commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the Commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address for political jurisdiction in which you live. The Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the Commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. So if you would like to make comment at this time on something not on the agenda, unless it's the consent calendar, which in this case is approval of minutes of the last of two previous meetings, you will see on the right side of your screen a GoToWebinar control panel. There is an icon of a hand. If you click on the hand, that will indicate to staff that you would like to speak. So this would be the time to click on that hand and so indicate, and then you will have three minutes to speak. And good evening, Mr. Tapia. We'll give a minute to see if anyone has something they would like to say.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission and members of the public. At this time, I am showing a member of the public who would like to speak at this time. I will go ahead with your permission, activate their microphone.
Please, you have three minutes.
Okay, so Kim Novello, you should be able to activate your microphone this time.
And I will just indicate for the record, Mr. Barnes has joined the meeting.
Hi, this is Kim Novello. If you can hear me, this is my first time attending. Thank you. My first time attending a Commission meeting, and I've never used the GoTo platform before, so I had to ask for a little help, so thank you. I, again, it's my first meeting, and I have been a resident of Menlo Park since, I believe, 2004. I recently moved, well, it's a year and a half, but I moved from the Fairfax area to the downtown area. I don't know the jurisdiction I'm in. And the reason that I reached out tonight is I saw the agenda for the evening. I'm just starting to get involved more than I had in the past in what's going on in the city of Menlo Park. And I did notice, I know that we can't talk about agenda items, I know there's a large development that's on the plate for tonight, but what I'm wondering is, in general, how people, I say, I guess, people that live in Menlo Park, aside from being as proactive as I've been recently, just find out in general about the projects that are going on and would like, you know, if we wanted to, I feel like we're not being asked if we even want these types of programs. I don't know of any polls being taken, and I'm also wondering if programs in general, or projects in general, are now, is there an equity lens that's being used on these projects? I've heard through the grapevine, there's some kind of housing 2020 or some kind of commission. Again, this is my first entry point, so I just don't know yet how to navigate getting issues addressed, but I took a walk in nature along the train tracks today, and I was thinking how great it would be if we could have some kind of nature walks connecting all the communities, breaking, you know, I think that would really help, especially if you're talking about equity and trying to bring the city together. Finding ways to just keep in mind, you know, these projects, for example, I don't know why 85% is rental and only 15% is below market rate. I don't know why so many are rental versus being sold as far as enabling people to, you know, be able to afford housing here and get in at an equitable, or not, I shouldn't say equitable, but afford housing and start to build equity in a home. I don't know why, yeah, I don't know why so many places are rental units. I don't know why more office space is being built. It seems like housing's an issue, not a need for more office space, because to me, that indicates we may need to bring in more, more people may want to work here and come in and need housing, and it may only exacerbate. So thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Novello. There are a couple of things that we can respond to, and I will also ask Mr. Prada to to help fill in from staff's point of view. I think one of the first things that a resident might want to do is to be on the email list for development projects. There is such a list, and you will get a notice when projects are introduced to the city at a certain level. Also, the city's website increasingly contains various clusters of information that you can connect with and get notified about. The city has addressed actually these issues that you have discussed, although not necessarily resolved them in a way that everyone agrees with. Mr. Prada, is there any other help that we could give Ms. Novello in terms of connecting with current events and policy?
Sure. So, thank you, Chair. That was also a very good summary. There are definitely additional items of information. There's a, most of our development projects are now available on a Development Projects Tracker website, GIS map. So there are ways to get more information through our website for all the projects that are going on within Menlo Park. We do also have the ability to add people to public notices for projects like CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act project, so, you know, like the project that we're reviewing tonight, when a document's released, we can add people to that specific listserv. I would also, Ms. Novello, I'm happy to answer a lot of your questions offline. If you want to send me an email or call me, my contact information's on the website. I'm happy to point you to all the resources that Chair Riggs and I have mentioned on our website, as well as kind of the other ways to sign up for notices. And then, lastly, there was a mention of the housing element update, and that is a process we will be starting this year, so there definitely will be opportunities for notices for that and involvement from the community. There will be a robust community outreach process with the 2020, what's the year, 2023 to 2030 housing element? I hope I got the years right. But the next housing element cycle, which starts up in the next, this year will start the process, and then it will be needed to be adopted by, I think, 2023. I think, does that help?
That sounds good, and do we have any other speakers for public comment?
Yeah, at this time, Chair, there's no other commentators.
All right. I think we've had enough time to click on the hand, so I will close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent calendar or item E on the agenda. Under the consent calendar, we have two items. E1 is approval of minutes and a court report from the December 7, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. And item E2 is the approval of minutes from the December 14, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve or request to pull one of the items, Mr. DeCarty?
I move to approve the consent items as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Doran?
I would like a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, if you'll indicate with your hand, and I will read your names to the record. We have Mr. Barnes, Mr. DeCarty, Mr. Cale, Mr. Doran, and Ms. Tate, and myself. So that is unanimous 6-0 with Ms. Camille Kennedy absent for this evening. With that, we move to item F, which is our public hearing for tonight. Item F1 and item G1 make up the, essentially, the remainder of our agenda this evening. And they both are in regard to the SABRATO organization's submittal for a use permit, architectural control, et cetera, and I will read the item F1 first. I'll note that, not to mislead here, there will be a discussion following this item, both its EIR and a study session to determine this substantial conformance of 333 D Marmona Drive, a residential application that is requested to change. So that will be somewhat further down in the evening. So tonight, item F1, this is the environmental impact report. We say EIR scoping session for applicant, the SABRATO organization, for 119 to 127 Independence Drive, 1205 Chrysler Drive, and 130 Constitution Drive, a cluster of lots together. This is a request for environmental review, use permit, architectural control, heritage tree permits, removal permits, below-market-rate housing agreement, and a vesting tentative map for a proposed mixed-use development in the RMU, that is residential mixed-use zoning district. The proposed project will consist of a major subdivision for 67 for-sale townhomes, construction of a 316-unit rental apartment building, and an 88,750-square-foot office building. The applicant is requesting a use permit for bonus-level development in exchange for the provision of community amenities. The project also includes a hazardous materials use permit request to allow for a diesel generator to operate in the event of an emergency. The proposed floor area ratio, FAR, would be 143%, where a maximum of 148% is allowed with community amenities. The proposed project would consist of 15% below-market-rate housing units, and the proposed project will be required to comply with the city's BMR program. Environmental review is required to assess the potential environmental impacts of the project. The proposed project is considered a housing development project pursuant to the Housing Accountability Act of the State of California. The California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, as we call it, requires this notice to disclose whether any listed hazardous waste sites are present at the location. The project location does not contain the toxic site pursuant to Section 6596.2 of the government code. Mr. Prada, do we proceed at this point with the public hearing and have a second reading for the discussion of the study session?
Yes, that's correct, and Katie Metter, our senior planner, will give a staff presentation, and then we will go into presentations by the applicant and the city's EIR consultant. So I'll turn it over to Katie at this time, but yes, we will go into a study session after, so the city, the planning commission should focus their discussion at this time, and the public as well, on the EIR scoping session.
Thank you. Ms. Metter?
Good evening, planning commissioners. So, thank you, Chair, for that lengthy project description. So this is the project looking at 123 Independence Drive, and this portion of the presentation will focus on the scoping session. So here you can see the proposed project location. The proposed project will have frontages on both Independence Drive, Chrysler Drive, and Constitution Drive. And it is located in the RMU bonus zoning district. Let me just go back there for a second, just to give you a little bit of an overview of the project and what it includes. It will include 316 rental apartment units, 67 for-sale townhomes, and approximately 88,750 square feet of office. And 15% of the rental and for-sale units would have to be proposed as affordable BMR units, and then the total site is made up of five different parcels for a total area of 8.15 acres. So the meeting tonight, there'll be two public hearings. One will focus on the environmental impact report scoping session, so that's what this part is right now. So that will give the public and the planning commission an opportunity to comment on the ER topics that will be studied. In attendance, we also have a court reporter who will be taking transcript of the meeting. And then the second portion of the meeting after this will be on the study session, and that will be for the planning commission and public to provide feedback on the project design, building design, site design, things like the open space, proposed uses, community amenities, and below-market-rate units. So at this meeting, no action will be taken, but we'll just be collecting comments. And then, as far as formatting, we recommend that we do the ER scoping session first, and then after my presentation, we'll do a presentation by the applicant, followed by the EIR consultant presentation, then public comments, and then after that, we'll go into the planning commissioner questions and comments, and then close the scoping session before we head into the study session. So if we can really focus our comments in on the EIR portion of the project at the beginning, that would be most beneficial, so we can capture them all in that court reporter transcript. And then after that, we'll go into the study session, and that will start with, I will actually do another presentation, then we'll take public comments, and then planning commissioner questions and comments. And then, I did receive one letter from the Native American Heritage Commission after the staff report was published, and that should be included in the agenda tonight, and also emailed to you guys earlier today. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add, but would be happy to answer questions after all the presentations.
Mr. Barnes, question?
Yes, in the spirit of a clarifying question as it relates to the intro part of this and what we're going to be talking about this evening, in the introduction part of it, it notes that the proposed project is considered a housing development project pursuant to the Housing Accountability Act. So within that context, you can answer now or later on, as we work through this, would you detail, given that it's a housing development project, under the Housing Accountability Act, how does that impact the discretion by the council or by the planning commission for approvals of the project, and what does that mean for the project?
Yeah, I can try to answer some of that now, and then maybe Kyle will want to jump in with more, but the Housing Accountability Act, or we call them SB 330 projects, that will limit the number of public hearings on the project to five, so that's one of the limitations, and then also what it does is it locks the project into the development regulations at the time of the project's submittal. So that means like we can't add any new development regulations onto the project that weren't in place when they first submitted, and it's just the goal is to streamline the process for some of these housing developments, and I think like that's the general goal. I don't know if there's like any other main points that the SB 330 status adds, that maybe Kyle, you want to jump in and add to?
Sure. So, in addition to those items, there is also some limitations placed on the ability of a city to impose modifications that would result in a reduction in density to a project, and then also objective standards. There's some limitations on applying subjective standards versus objective standards as well.
And we saw, I'm sorry, through the chair, we saw this same 330, none of you see recently Gray Stars project, but we also, I believe, saw this, which was across on El Camino, where Feldman's bookstore is, and that project there was also a Housing Accountability Act, I believe, if someone can confirm that, where we had somewhat limitations on the discretionary aspect of the design of the project, as long as it was conforming to standards, for instance, in that case, of a downtown specific plan. Is that pretty much what we have here as well, as long as it conforms to what's prescriptively called out in Connect Menlo? The design discretion is somewhat limited from planning commission standpoint? Is that correct?
Yes, so that's correct. The Menlo Uptown project, I think you saw just recently, and Menlo Flats, they were both similar, and then I believe the Feldman's bookstore, that one has gone through that process too. So similar to those, we would have to follow the design standard, like, so the RMUB zoning district does have some design standards in it that we can require that the project comply with, but we cannot require additional design standards above and beyond that.
I'm sorry, last question on that. So, we can't fuss with the development regulations. Does the 15% prescriptive BMR that is required for the project, is that in the bucket of development regulations you can't fuss with? In other words, it wouldn't be a discretionary item to increase that. It's locked into 15%. Does that fall into that bucket of what you can't mess with?
I believe they are locked into the BMR requirements at the time of the submittal, however, since this is a bonus-level project and requires community amenities, BMR housing units are one of the potential community amenities, so the planning commission could talk about, you know, wanting additional BMR units as part of that.
Okay, so good for them, that can be many bucket, but it's locked into 15% prescriptive for the BMR as required. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thanks, Katie. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. So, moving on with the presentation.
Peter, you should have control of the mouse and keyboard.
Okay, I can control it if the applicant's okay with that. Just tell me when you want me to move forward.
Got it. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay. Well, good evening, Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Duran, Chair Commissioners, Staff, Menlo Park residents. Thank you for giving us the opportunity this evening to present 123 Independence. I am Peter Tai from the SABRATO organization. I'm joined tonight by Mar Murgur from Studio T-Square and Headquarters from KSH Architects, and Nick Samuelson from the Gazardo Partnership. Next slide, please. All right, for those of you who are unfamiliar with SABRATO, we're a local family-owned organization that's been part of the Bay Area since 1950s. The organization consists of three divisions, SABRATO Capital, SABRATO Philanthropy, and SABRATO Real Estate. The ethos of the organization, making the Bay Area a place of opportunity for all, is shown through its philanthropic work, as well as its approach towards real estate. Next slide, please.
I apologize, it seems like it's going just a little bit slow.
There you go. No worries. All right, and now to the project. For context, here's a map of the site, which currently consists of light industrial and office buildings. The eight-acre site is bound by Independence to the west, Constitution to the east, Chrysler to the south, neighboring buildings to the north. Next slide. You know, we understand that we're in a very unique point in time. Everyone's facing many challenges. You know, that said, we believe in the long-term viability of a mixed-use project in this location. You know, for the office component, we believe, you know, office buildings are necessary, and while there are benefits to working from home, less time commuting, flexible work schedules, not having to wear pants, there are drawbacks, such as a lack of in-person interaction and the absence- there are drawbacks such as a lack of in-person interaction and the absence of community cultures. You know, we do believe that people will come back and return to the office place. And healthier office and residential building trends such as touchless controls, better programming and use of outdoor spaces have simply been accelerated by COVID. And these trends are striving to create a healthier work and live environment. A healthy, sustainable project needs to be designed for the future. Next slide. Menlo Park has been at the forefront of implementing sustainable practices for development projects, all electric buildings, EV parking, waste reduction, gray water treatment, and 123 Independence was designed with these practices in mind. In addition, Sobrato will strive for Fitwell certification, which is a building certification similar to LEED and to create healthier workplace environments. Next slide. Now, as a long-term holder of real estate, Sobrato strives to become part of the neighborhood it develops in. So community outreach is an essential part of our, of our process. Amid the COVID pandemic, we have virtually met with a diverse group of Menlo Park and Bell Heaton stakeholders, all with similar and differing community interests. This broad inclusive approach allows us to get a holistic understanding of the community. For example, we met with New Hope Community Church, All Five, Beechwood Elementary, Dashi Sushi, United Health, Youth United, just to give a couple of names. Next slide, please. This chart represents a list of the current community amenities list, and the bold and enlarged text represent the consistent feedback we received during our outreach process. We'll continue our outreach efforts in order to reach as many stakeholders as possible. But as you can tell, kind of the repeated themes are traffic calming and high-quality affordable housing. Also, as Katie mentioned, since 123 Independence is an SB 330 project, it is to comply with the community amenity list at the time of its application, which was July of 2020. Next slide. In order to give you some context and feel for the project, since this is the first time we are in front of you, we'll be showing you a quick kind of fly-through of the project. But first, to give you an overview of the proposed development, starting the lower right side of the page with the office at the corner of Chrysler Independence, and moving clockwise, we have the townhomes along Independence and the apartments along Constitution. These are all connected by open spaces and paseos to bring together a cohesive campus. And so now to the fly-through. So this is taking a bird's eye view, coming down on the office project, and then working our way down Independence. You will see the townhomes on the right-hand side. There are 41 townhomes in what we call Lot C. Separating Lot C is a public park. And to the opposite side of this public open space is Lot A, which is 26th Townhome Unit. You can see the open space provides a nice placemaking for the neighborhood. We are now walking down the paseo towards the apartment building on the right-hand side, towards Constitution. The five-story product with two levels of parking. We'll now be returning back. Now you'll get kind of the corner of the apartment building with the leasing office. We're working our way back down to the paseo where we came up. And then you see the townhomes again on the left-hand side. That is the 41 units on Lot C. We will be then going down through another paseo, splitting the townhomes on the left and right-hand side, heading towards the office building. Then we will be spinning out, giving another bird's eye view of the project. So with that, I will be turning the presentation over to Mar Merver with Studio T-Square. She'll be going over the residential design aspect of this project. Mar?
Okay, thank you. Can we go to the next slide? So as you've seen in the video fly-through, the new community is well-connected to the Greater District with the new paseo and the neighborhood park. So to the west and east of the park are the two townhome communities with a total of 67 units and their own smaller green spaces and secondary pedestrian pathways. To the north on Constitution Drive, you oppose a five-story apartment building with 316 units and courtyard amenities with pool deck. Next slide, please.
Hold one second.
Great. So in terms of urban design, we have carefully crafted the residential architecture and massing to ensure variety and scale. There's a taller urban edge on Constitution Drive, complementary in scale and character to the recently built offices. The townhomes on Independence Drive provide a slightly smaller neighborhood scaled character with lots of sun exposure to the neighborhood park and open space. Two parking levels are embedded in the apartment building, fully hidden from public view. All four sides of the building are addressed architecturally with similar attention to details, a true four-sided architecture. There's a nice diversity of architectural character throughout the site, yet all building designs are related to each other so we can ensure a coherent appearance and the sense of place. Next slide. Next slide is showing the apartment building. So it's a four-story building, and it has a height up to 60 feet. You think it has a nice variation in the roof line and height modulation. There's a partial step-back on the top floor above the 50-foot base element, and also many major and minor modulations to break down the massing. The ground floor design creates a really pleasant pedestrian experience with a leasing office at the corner of Constitution and the paseo seen here in the front. And the ground floor residential units all feature stoop entries. There are multiple lobbies as well that connect to the building. Next slide, please. The material palette includes plaster and tile and siding and large window openings. And overall, it's a high quality of materials and finishes that we are providing at a residential scale, but with commercial quality finishes. Next slide, please. The townhomes focus also on creating active edges with entries facing the neighborhood park, the paseo and Independence Drive, and two different yet complementary townhome buildings that are in two different styles and massing we designed. And both designs feature three-story townhomes with lots of recesses, ins and outs and heights around 32 feet. Next slide. Also, the materials for the townhomes are very warm materials and again include warm colored siding with accents and steel, metal, and glass railings. So overall, there's a high quality of materials and finishes. And we believe the contemporary architecture of our proposed designs really complement well the surrounding commercial uses. So with this, I would like to hand it over to Ted Korth, Architect of the Office Building.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. This is a view of the proposed building in the corner of Independence Drive and Chrysler Drive. It's a three-story office building. The parking is tucked in. You can see it's sleeving under the building at the far left. We've chosen light color palette for the solid portions of the building, and then clear glass for the window area of the building so that it provides transparency, both looking from outside inside and vice versa. Has a nice pedestrian scaled entry pathway on Chrysler Drive. And then at the far left, where the parking extends out beyond the edge of the building, there's an outdoor landscape terrace that provides a scale transition.
Did that get muted for everyone else?
Sorry, on the left side where you can see the terrace stepping down, adjacent to the townhomes, shows modulation along both elevations with the terrace at the center of the building on Chrysler Drive. So it should be a nice addition to that neighborhood and fit in well with the residential as well. Thank you. And then I'll pass on the baton to Nick Samuelson of the Gazardo Partnership, and he'll go through, starting with the next slide.
All right, thanks, Ted. So as Ted said, Nick Samuelson from the Gazardo Partnership for Landscape Architects. Looking at the landscape design here, our goal was to integrate all of the fun landscape elements we wanted to do with the functions that are required for the site. That includes fire access that goes between several of the parcels, which is pretty critical for safety through the site. All the connections we wanted to get between the different uses and the paseo that connects from Independence up to Constitution. It's a part of the Connect Menlo Park requirements. So we can go to the next slide. So the most exciting part as far as we're concerned from the landscape design is the central open space which fronts on to Independence. It's part of what the site has to do to meet with seawater rise. There's a five-foot grade change that we're having to pick up over the site from the existing grade. So we're using that to our advantage by creating a terrace landscape element that takes you up those heights and provides us with a series of different rooms in the park. So you have different areas with DG seating areas and turf, then trellis areas and other uses that fall along. And they fall along with the paseo path, which takes a little bit of a jog through here to integrate that into the park design. And go to the next slide. And the first image, looks like it skipped a few. A couple more. There you go. Perfect. It's got a lag, I think, on that one. There you go. All right, so in this first image here, it shows part of the paseos that are part of the fire access too. So it's 26 feet wide, which is a good amount of pavement, but it's required. So we looked at breaking that up by defining the circulation route with the concrete paths and then using varied materials of stone and DG and pavers to kind of break that up and provide a richness of materials, integrating seating on the edges of that and large canopy trees to kind of help provide shade over the paving areas. The second plan view down there shows one of the paseo courtyards that, between the townhomes and those, we get a little bit more intimate scale with the walkways, and you want to have a little lawn area that kids can come out there and play, and a little bit of a seating area so you can come out there and meet with people and you're able to do that again and provide some seating there as well. And go to the next slide, please. All right, so then this is another paseo. This is part of the paseo that connects from Independence to Constitution. So this is the part that's north of the big open space is also is a fire lane there too. So we're keeping the paseo the 10-foot width for the requirement, then using the rest with different paving materials. I have native plants through these areas, large shade trees to provide good canopy overhead. And then looking at the way we're varying the paving material and integrating seating into those elements. And the next slide, please. This is just some inspiration I'm gonna do sewing, kind of taking that origami geometry and using that for paving design and using that to integrate our seating elements and other features in the site. And that shows down in the bottom, right, kind of the idea with the terraced plaza spaces that can be incorporated into the grade changes that we have. And that shows up on the next slide as well too, some of those different seating areas as you make or climb up to five feet there. And with that, that's it. So thank you very much, so for the rest of the team, and we'll be happy to answer questions when it's appropriate.
All right, thank you, Katie. Do we move on to the EIR at this point before questions regarding the design?
Yeah, so our EIR consultant now has a presentation.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Hua. I'm just, introduce myself while I wait for that presentation to pop up. So I'm a senior project manager with DUDec. This is our first time working with the city of Menlo Park, but we're really excited for the opportunity. Let me get this into full screen. There we go. Okay, so I will just go quickly through my presentation, a little bit of an introduction to the purpose of the scoping session. Everyone else is, you know, the other presentations have covered the project overview, so I'll go quickly through that part and then discuss what we anticipate being the focus or the scope of the environmental impact report, and then an overview of the, of the process and schedule before we would recommend opening up the, the public hearing for public comment. So the, the purpose of a scoping session is to help inform our work as we prepare the environmental impact report. And so this is the, the first opportunity for the public and outside agencies to provide input identifying what issues, environmental issues are of importance to the community members and to any agencies that may have an approval over the, some element of the project. They, we also typically see in scoping comments that community members and agencies will suggest mitigation measures or strategies that can be used to help mitigate any project impacts. And then also sometimes suggestions regarding what sorts of project alternatives should be considered as we're preparing the environmental impact report. So just to reiterate for, for members of the public who would want to make comments tonight, that for this scoping session, we really want to focus on what are the, the areas related to environmental impacts that, that this project could have an effect and, and how that would affect the community members and what kinds of strategies have, can be recommended to help mitigate some of those effects. So rather than focusing on things like design and, and project elements, really focusing on the environmental issues, which I'll, I'll have a slide that lists the topics that we'll be looking at. So as I mentioned, I think the project overview has been, has been explained very well by Katie and by the applicant team. We have here an image that helps orient folks as to the, the location of the project as, as has been explained. as has been explained previously. And then just to, a quick summary to reiterate that the five existing office and industrial buildings within the project site, which total a little over 100,000 square feet, would be demolished. There are five existing parcels, but those will be reconfigured into creating four parcels as are labeled here on the slide with parcel A being to the left showing the townhomes. Parcel B being the apartments that are accessed from Constitution Drive. Parcel C being the townhomes in the center of the project site. And then parcel D being the office along Chrysler Drive. And then as Chair Riggs had summarized earlier in the meeting, in addition to these specific elements, the project would require several entitlements, including a use permit, an architecture control review, a major subdivision, heritage tree removal permits, and then the below market rate housing agreement. In terms of the environmental impact report, there's a discussion in the staff report that identifies that in some of the prior housing projects the city has recently considered, a focused EIR was prepared because those housing projects were still within the residential unit cap that's identified in Connect Menlo. This project with the number of units that are proposed would go over that cap. And therefore, we have a little bit more analysis that's needed rather than doing what we typically call tiering from the general plan EIR. We need to take a fresh look at a more complete list of issues. And so those issues are shown on the slide. In addition, a financial or fiscal impact analysis would be completed. That typically does not get reflected in the environmental impact report because CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, does not ask us to look at issues related to fiscal impacts. And then there would also be a housing needs assessment completed as well, which would help inform the population, employment, and housing chapter. For the other topics, we are doing typical technical studies. For example, for biological and cultural resources, we've had our staff out to inspect the site and they're working on preparing reports documenting what they found out there. We will also be doing modeling to prepare estimates of air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, or air pollutant and greenhouse gas emissions. And doing a review of hazards and hazardous materials information to make sure that we have adequately addressed those issues. And I'm happy, I wanted to just give a quick overview, but I'm happy to answer questions about any of the details of some of those technical studies or the approach to those issues. There are three topics under CEQA that we have determined we would not need to be evaluated. And that is explained in the notice of preparation that is out for public review currently. Those three are agricultural and forestry resources because none exist within or adjacent to the project site. Mineral resources, again, none exist within or adjacent to the project site. And then wildfire is a newer issue that you'll see in a lot of newer EIRs. But the project area does not have, you know, is not near a fire, wildland fire hazard severity zone. And so that's another issue that we have focused out. In terms of the overall environmental review process, as I mentioned, we have published a notice of preparation earlier this month. And that is out for public review and was submitted through the state clearinghouse to be circulated to state agencies. And it's also out for review with local agencies to help inform the preparation of the environmental impact report. Tonight is the draft EIR scoping session, and the end of the comment period is February 8. So all of the comments that are received tonight and through written responses to the notice of preparation will be summarized and evaluated as we're preparing the individual chapters of the EIR to make sure that we're addressing all of the issues that were raised. We anticipate that the draft EIR will be published for public review in this summer. And that the planning commission would hold another public hearing to receive comments on that draft EIR in late summer. After the draft EIR comment period ends, we will prepare direct responses to each of the comments that were raised. Where necessary, there may be revisions or edits made to the draft EIR to clarify some of the impact analysis or mitigation measures. And then we would publish a final EIR containing all of those responses as well as the revised draft, which we expect to do in the fall this year. And then that would be available for the city to consider certification and through the rest of the project processing. So just to reiterate that any written comments that the public or agencies want to submit need to be submitted to Katie Medor by February 8 at 5:00 PM. And her contact information is listed here on the slide. And that completes my presentation. As I said, I'm happy to answer any questions on some of those details, but we look forward to receiving the public comments.
All right. Thank you. If there are no immediate questions regarding the EIR presentation, I will go ahead to a public comment. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. Thank you for that description of the EIR and going through that. A couple of questions as it relates to that. If you could just walk back through the part of it which is having to do a focus, what I think I heard was having to focus EIR specifically this project because the programmatic EIR associated with Connect Menlo is being exceeded in terms of the unit count associated with residential. So did I get that right when I heard that? Is that correct?
Yes. And so that usually in the programmatic EIR, some assumptions are made as to the level of development that is anticipated under the planning document. And so those assumptions then inform the analysis that is done on a whole range of topics and issues. And so in order to make sure that we've updated, you know, and are looking at the complete set of, you know, what development or full buildout would look like if this project were approved, we need, we go back and double check that those assumptions, if they are no longer valid, you know, what adjustments need to be made? And how does that affect the environment and the conclusions of that EIR?
So what, is it presumptive to assume that, well, is there an approval that allows for exceeding of the residential cap? Is that a separate approval that you get, for instance, from another body? Be it in this case, city council that says, yes, you can exceed. And then when you get that, you go through this focused EIR? Which is the chicken and which is the egg in terms of, you know, determining that you even need to do this, having been allowed to exceed it?
Sure. And I don't know the city's, you know, policies and processes as as well as I know that the environmental impact end of it. But in terms of the CEQA approach, we typically, you know, we frequently work with projects that require some kind of a discretionary approval that maybe does exceed a development cap or exceed a density limitation or something along those lines. And it is, the best practice under CEQA is to assume that the project is approved as proposed. And that way, we are capturing all of the environmental effects that could come through, you know, the development that, the application that is before the decision makers. The decision makers, of course, still have the opportunity to exercise all of the discretion that's allowed to them under the city and state regulations that govern that project. But it would be, you know, CEQA requires that we do this environmental analysis before the decision is made as to what level of development, you know, can be allowed or the city can, you know, feel comfortable, you know, entitling for that site.
And if I can just add to that a little bit too. So I just want to clarify that the number of units they're proposing is covered under the general plan, which allows a total of 4,500 residential units. It's just that the EIR for the EIR for the general plan only studied a certain portion of those housing units. So that's why we need to do a full EIR at this time to study the additional units they're proposing. So they are requesting a general plan amendment to add additional units above what the general plan had studied or had planned for, I guess I should say.
And, okay, when you say general plan, you mean a general plan amendment specific to Connect Menlo or an overall general plan for the entire city? And that's pulling from a different area of the city?
I see Kyle jump up, but I mean, my understanding is that it's total residential unit. But Kyle may have something to add to.
Yeah, so let's, let me try to clarify it through the chair if it's okay if I jump in. The Connect Menlo studied, Connect Menlo specifically studied 4,500 housing units in the Bayfront area. That's additive to the previous general plan that had some development potential outside of the specific plan. That's a separate document already built in. So there are more than 4,500 units. But the important thing is that the 4,500 units that were studied in the EIR, the program level EIR for Connect Menlo, broke out those 4,500 units into about 3,000 unrestricted units and 1,500 kind of corporate style dormitory units. But the general plan itself put a cap on everything at 4,500 units, not differentiating between corporate dormitory style units and unrestricted units. So the total out there is 4,500. This would be within that total. But it isn't studied under the general plan, Connect Menlo's program level EIR, because that only said 3,000 unrestricted units. And this project, I think, gets us into the 3,100 unit range. So we do need a full EIR for that purpose. Does that help clarify?
Yeah, that's spot on. Thanks. Appreciate that.
And then just to add on to that, Katie's previous statement, the project itself doesn't require a general plan amendment. I want to make sure that was clear. I think there might have been a glitch on my end for the audio. So I didn't hear the doesn't in there. So I think just want to make that clear.
Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. It was exactly my question. Catherine, I have another question about this. So as you do the focused EIR, and you go back and you look at the program EIR from Connect Menlo, that one used benchmarks that were best in class at that time. And how will you approach then benchmarks based on information gathered since then? So I mean, we could be specific, like around greenhouse gas emissions and impacts. Can you just describe a little bit about, are you looking, when you do that focused EIR and when you're going back and checking these assumptions? Can you just be more explicit about those assumptions? And I guess also against what benchmarks you'll be utilizing?
Yes, certainly. So, so yes, one of the key, you know, initial steps is for us to review and really dig into the, to the Connect Menlo programmatic EIR and to understand the methodologies and like you're saying, the benchmarks, the thresholds that were used in that document. And that really helps us to kind of define those parameters. These are the things that the city has already adopted as being the city's, you know, policies and standards. You know, both in terms of the general plan policy language or Connect Menlo policy language, as well as the thresholds that were used in that EIR to evaluate impacts. So that's sort of our starting point, but as you recognize, there are, you know, changes in regulations for a lot of different resources. And so we also look to all of those types of changes that have been adopted through, you know, state level regulatory actions or agency levels. So, you know, when the Air District adopts a new set of guidelines, you know, we also look to those. And so when we prepare our individual, you know, sections that focus on each resource issue that we're looking at, we do, you know, compile all of that information so that we are using, you know, defensible and industry standard or current best practices to measure those impacts and determine whether an impact rises to a level of significance and therefore requires mitigation or not.
Thank you for the explanation. When you complete the EIR, is there a way that you can be explicit if you in fact have updated or changed that benchmark from what was in the original program EIR? So that is something that can be called out perhaps in a table in a section or perhaps in a separate section in the IR so that we can understand what has remained the same that you're looking at this project against, given that we have seen multiple projects that have come through under the program EIR with this focused one? It would be helpful to know what has shifted. Does that, am I asking that in a way that is reasonable? Or am I not understanding something well?
No, I think I understand. And that's not something that we always necessarily do, but we certainly can. Usually in each section, there will be a subsection that lists what we call thresholds of significance. And so we can make a note that where those may differ from what was used in the Connect Menlo program EIR, that we should explain, you know, where that difference came from. You know, whether it's through more recently adopted regulation or guidance documents. And we will provide the citations for those. And I can work with city staff too, if there's enough of those to warrant, you know, maybe doing them in a table, in an appendix, or sort of in the, you know, in sort of an overview section. We can certainly provide that.
And I think that would be very helpful. I mean, the purpose of an EIR is sunshine and for community members to be able to understand what the potential impacts are. And I think having this shift would be extraordinarily helpful to lay out in a way that you just described. So thanks for considering.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Doran had a question.
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Barnes' question. Mr. Parada said that Connect Menlo envisioned 4,500 total units with 3,000 being residential and 1,500 being corporate dormitory style units. This project apparently will push the total for residential above 3,000. The question is, have there been any corporate dormitory style projects built? I can't remember them in my time on the commission. And if not, are there any current plans or projects in process for corporate dormitory style units?
That's not something that I'm aware of. There's Kyle's. I'll let him answer.
I can answer. We do not have any in the city, to my knowledge, and we don't have any proposed using the Connect Menlo zoning allowance there.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no more questions, I'd like to move to public comment at this time. If any member of the public would like to comment on the EIR portion of this meeting, we are scoping the EIR, which in part means that we are casting about for suggestions for what the EIR should study other than the standard format as has been described so far in the introduction by the EIR consultant. Or any comments on that content? So if you would like to comment, on the right side of your screen, the go-to meeting control panel contains a hand icon. And if you click on that, it will tell staff that you would like to make a comment. Our public comments are limited to three minutes, and they go into the formal record of this meeting. Mr. Tapia, do we have anyone wishing to speak on the EIR?
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission and members of the public. Looks like we do have a couple members of the public that would like to comment at this time. With your permission, I will go ahead and introduce the first commenter.
Please.
Okay, so Kim Novello, your microphone should now be active.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'm a little, I am unfamiliar with what the scope of an environmental with what the scope of an environmental report entails. Um, so what I'm wondering, what comes to mind when I think of environment is my space around me, say, if I were living there. Um, and so I'm wondering about mental health, if if that is taken into account when you're considering your, the environment of the space. I know there may be just like nature considered, but um that's something, just how it's laid out to affect people's mental health that would be living there. Also, connecting with nature is very important. Um, and I I have a lot of comments. I don't know that they would fall under this section. Um, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Novello. And I'll just note that the um E I R uh in its initial pages, um and the E I R is uh scoping is uh part of the staff report here, I believe. Um, the initial pages indicate what is studied. Uh, everything from agricultural use, which in this case there is no recent history, to um archaeological artifacts, uh as well as noise, air pollution and so forth are listed. And that list would be a good place to start um to get an idea of what an E I R covers. Also, please make note that an E I R specifically is present because of a California law that uh requires environmental quality impacts to be studied and uh gives a rather specific uh target for what this, the E I R should do. Um, this is part of why it is separate from the study session of the design, because that law has uh no interest in what the building looks like or how well it works. Um, Mr. Tapia, we have another speaker.
Yes, I will go ahead and introduce the next speaker. So Matthew Zito, your microphone. You should have the ability to activate your microphone.
There we are. Hi, Matthew Zito, uh Chief Facility Officer for the Sequoia Union High School District, uh of which the Bayfront uh neighborhood, of course, is part of the school district boundaries. And this particular project is just a few hundred yards, the office building component of it, from the Pied Academy, which is the district's high school there. And uh I'm assuming that this project will, you have at least a two year timeframe to go to construction. So at the time the project would complete it, there would be four hundred teenagers who would be uh in high school just very shortly down the street. And the majority of them would come in either through automobile, uh bike, uh walking or skateboard would actually come over the marsh, overpass, and then make that tight right turn that goes into uh the neighborhood. And the street that they would likely go down is Independence. Um, and so there will be quite a large number of students traipsing to and from the school down that street. Um, I would say the district's concerns, at least at this point, will send a more formal letter uh in terms of E I R components would be air quality. And then I think our largest concern would be transportation and traffic. And uh some of this is in general, looking at, you know, traffic patterns. Uh, the district does have eleven thousand students circulated around in the morning. Um, in this particular neighborhood, there, at least this point, fewer students than there will be in a few years. Uh, but we do have great concerns over traffic um and traffic safety. Um, and I know that there appear to be fourteen intersections that are going to be studied as part of the E I R. I'm not sure that's a complete and comprehensive list. Uh, if I look just at the the neighbor or the streets, uh the families would come if they were coming from the county, Central or West Menlo Park or from East Menlo Park or East Palo Alto, there seemed like there would be more than fourteen intersections. So just make sure there's a really robust traffic study that's attached to this project. And the other concern is regarding the total impact of developments. If I have this correctly, we have gray stars Menlo Flats, gray stars in Portol, gray stars Menlo Up Down, one eleven Independence, and now an additional four hundred units being proposed. Um, the total, in each of those focused E I Rs, just looked at their specific projects. I'm glad this is a full E I R, but I'm wondering if any document really is studying the total impact of that development and the fact that the build out is coming much more quickly than when ever, than when ever was anticipated, right? A twenty to forty year timeframe that's now condensed into less than ten years. So concerns about that. And also finally, the dormitory style apartments are very different from the student generation standpoint than our large, large apartments and town homes. Those are two very different things to study in terms of student generation. Our school that serves this area, the Comprehensive High School, Menlo Atherton, is already overcrowded. And we now have, what, some three thousand units? And I think they've been fully analyzed and the Connect Menlo plan didn't really do a complete and robust fiscal analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Zito. I'm sorry, you're well over your three minutes, but we do understand your concerns.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, uh, Mr. Tapia, any other speakers?
Yes, Chair, I will go ahead and introduce the next speaker. So Pamela Jones, you should have the ability to activate your microphone. So Pamela Jones, your microphone is showing as active, so you should be able to speak at this time.
Ms. Jones, if in the upper portion of your go to webinar control panel, the symbol of the microphone is not green, you need to click on it to make sure you can speak. Do you want to test your voice?
So it looks like she may be having some technical difficulties, Chair. Uh, there was another commenter. You want me to move on to the next one for now?
Yes, please. And we might be able to come back to Ms. Jones in three minutes.
Okay, it looks like actually the other commenter put their virtual hand down. But I did have uh Ms. Novello, who raised her virtual hand again. And through the chair, I was just wondering if she has the ability to speak again.
No, we do limit to three minutes uh for a variety of reasons. Um, but it is always possible, particularly on the E I R process, to write into Ms. Mador and make comment on the process. And also um to uh take up Mr. Prada on his offer to um help with uh background on involvement in the city. We might wait for um just a little bit more to see if Ms. Jones is able to connect. And during that time, um if I could ask Mr. Prada, uh, there was a question from Mr. Zito about whether or not we look collectively at other residential projects. Um, and I think I know the answer, but might take a moment to clarify that.
Uh, sure, yes. So we, we do do a cumulative analysis for all topic areas that are studied uh in each E I Rs, whether it's a focused E I R or a full E I R. The topic areas that are being studied, we do have a cumulative analysis for those areas. And that does take into account uh the overall um total development potential that's not just proposed but available under Connect Menlo and the broader general plan in Menlo Park. So yes, the cumulative does include all the projects that are currently on file and the projects not yet applied for that could use that future development potential.
Thank you. Mr. Tapia, do we have any luck with Ms. Jones?
Looks like her virtual hand has gone away, but I do see another virtual hand from another member of the public who would like to speak.
All right, let's connect.
Okay, so Dorothy Conroy, you should have the ability to activate your microphone at this time.
Thank you. Um, I am a neophyte here, and so I hope my comments will be appropriate. Um, I'm particularly concerned about um the greenhouse gas emissions, air quality, and water conservation that are built directly into the, to the unit, uh all of the different units. Um, um, so in particular, the greenhouse gas emissions are connected to the traffic and parking. I hope that there is um more than adequate parking for every unit so that we don't end up with Palo Alto problems with too many units and not enough parking. And the traffic is definitely of of a concern. And it also is a concern when talking about air quality, um, that heritage, you know, heritage trees, even one. I mean, it takes decades and decades for them to be able to uh do their, their job of cleansing the air. And I'm concerned about the the removal of of any heritage trees at all. Um, and um I I liked, um, and and with regards to water conservation, you're aware, of course, that, you know, we're in a drought area. And um so we have to be careful on how we use the resources and how we plan to use them, having low flow, everything. I understand it's a Leeds project. Um, I just wanted to highlight that that concern. Um, also to make sure that we use solar where where possible, so again, cut down on um on on any emissions. And um, and finally, I I did like what the other uh person spoke about, with the the general environment. And I understand we are talking about things that are more specific, but it is important when you're talking about the general environment of of a project that um a lot of times the green space, it's just like walk through green space. And I think it is important that we, we think about ways to make it um very inviting and above all comfortable. I mean, chairs like Adirondack chairs that line some of the areas and and it, the mental health piece actually rang true. Uh, you know, I I, so I just think that we have to give a lot of thought to making sure that this seating is not just benches, not just stools, you know, but there's, there's com- comfort that is built into it to make the people want to come out of their, their areas and and enjoy the and the, and the beautiful buildings that you are creating. So thank you for listening.
If I may, Chair, it looks like I made some initial contact with Pamela Jones. I think she's having some technical difficulties at this time. If I may, through the chair, uh to try to invite Pamela Jones.
So, Mr. Tapia, if uh you have any content coming in?
Sorry, Chair, are you able to hear me at this time?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. My microphone was briefly off. Um, I'm trying to cover a cough and forgetting to turn it back on. So yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so it looks like we made contact with Pamela Jones. So with your permission, I would like to introduce introduce her at this time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so Pamela Jones should have the ability to activate your microphone.
Thank you. Um, so my comments weren't heard?
No, but you are, you are heard now.
Okay, okay. All right. So, um, thank you. Um, my first comment was about cultural and tribal. Um, note that the current buildings have been there for so long that they probably weren't required um to report if they found any native uh remains. So it's important that as the workers begin to really clear out that area that they're aware. Um, we know this is Aloney Ramatoush land, so we know they were here. Um, the second thing I have is about um traffic mitigation. And I wasn't able to find the uh list of traffic impact assessment, but that's okay. Um, the, uh, since there's five projects going to be going on at the same time in that same area, at the same end of the area, that's over, that's about fourteen hundred and sixty four units. And if we multiply that times two people, um, that's a lot of people that are going to be moving in over there. And we need to consider traffic that will be trying to access that area from Willow Road. There will be times when traffic is so heavy that people will take that back way in, which is again through um the Bell Haven neighborhood. And there's already an issue, well, there will be an issue when we open up completely again, um, especially since we have the Willow Village that will be completed not too long after they're completed over there, which is another um seventeen hundred uh units. So, thank you very much, and um.
And we've lost you. Uh, we lost you with the thank you very much. So at least I think we got uh the bulk of your comments. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Um. All right, uh, Mr. Tapia, uh, any other hands raised?
At this time, Chair, that is all we have.
All right, this is the right time to close public comment on the E I R section of this uh project. Um, and uh bring it up to the commissioners for questions regarding uh the E I R scope as presented, uh followed by uh any comments, um suggestions regarding the scoping. So do I have any questions or comments, Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I'd like to, first of all, I just want to thank everybody from the community. It is fantastic and really appreciate you all um putting up with the difficulty of doing this remotely to have your voice heard. It's really important. So thank all of you for your comments. Um, I want to follow up on several people who have talked about the the transportation impacts. Um, and just to ask um uh how specifically you're thinking about looking at that in both the scope of the E I R and then also as you think about the alternatives for projects. Um, and it's, and then how to think through where transportation demand management is put in place? You know, where is that looked at in the E I R versus where is that part of the project and the development? As, as I know, a T D M plan is part of what would be engaged with with the park. If you could just explain that, appreciate it, Catherine.
Um, sure. So yes, there, um, T D M is is an element that will be, you know, defined as part of the the product, project proposal. Uh, but we'll also be informed by the transportation analysis. If we find that the um T D M measures that have been put forth are not sufficient um to control impacts, then we can recommend additional measures to be, to be added on to that. Um, in terms of the, the scope itself of the traffic study, the the transportation study, um, the, you know, under Sequoia, the, the main focus um in the E I R will be talking about vehicle miles traveled, uh because there have been changes to the Sequoia guidelines um in recent years that restrict us from looking at what, what people are used to seeing, which is the, the level of service at various intersections. However, we worked closely with city, city staff to make sure. However, we worked closely with city city staff to make sure that that is a component of our scope as well to help inform, you know, some of these factors that that the community members, you know, are interested in and need to know about as well as the decision makers. And so we we do have, as one of the commenters referred to, there's a detailed scope for the traffic study. I don't remember if it's included in the staff report for this meeting, but it was included in the staff report to the city council when they when they authorized the contract with DUDAC to prepare the CIR. And so that's, you know, available for people to look at if there are specific other intersections that are of concern, then that would be a great comment to make to, you know, identify those. So then we can look at it with the city staff again and and make sure that we've, you know, included all of the appropriate intersections.
And just one more follow up. Thank you, through the Chair. So to the point made that this is a multiple projects with a lot more residential happening at the same time and that collapsed down in terms of its, you know, development window in what was a twenty to forty year expectation is now tighter than that. So in that scoping, you are also looking at all of those projects and the cumulative impacts around transportation?
Yes. Yeah. And as Kyle said, for all of the topics that we evaluate in the EIR, we will consider cumulative impacts and that will include all of what what we call under SEQA are the reasonably foreseeable projects. So typically, those are projects that have been recently approved but not yet constructed or maybe are partially constructed, you know, and we add on the the additional traffic that would come as those reach full build out, as well as other projects that, you know, are far enough along in the process of, you know, entitlement process to understand what, you know, whether to include them as a reasonably foreseeable project and and what their effects may be. So we will work carefully with city staff to make sure that we've captured all of those projects that that belong in the cumulative analysis.
Great. Thanks for your clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any comments on the EIR? All right, I think I have a couple. So, Ms. Wall, the EIR inevitably will include a no project alternative. Do you have, and excuse me if it's already in the text, forgive me, do you have a proposed alternative project for the EIR comparison?
No, we have not started working on those yet. We typically like to get a little bit into the analysis because the intent under SEQA for an alternatives analysis is to find alternatives that would reduce or avoid some of the impacts of the project. And so we we might, you know, start looking at kind of broad concepts for alternatives at this stage, particularly as we get comments, you know, on the notice of preparation and and folks have any suggestions along that line. But we we stay away from, you know, getting committed to a particular alternative or concept until we have a better understanding of where we're, what what types of impacts the project could could cause so that we make sure that alternatives analysis responds directly to those those impacts.
I will go ahead and make a suggestion for an alternative, which would be a fully built out residential project per the one hundred dwelling units per acre maximum in the code. And I might as well suggest that that be a residential project only with no office space. I would do this as a test to illuminate, among other, traffic impact. And then, on a separate issue, is it appropriate for the EIR to identify the recreation locations that would serve this this population? Including an analysis of the availability of space or hours to include at the minimum the desire for soccer fields?
So typically, when we look at recreational facilities, we look at things like the the statewide Quimby Act and any policies that the city has adopted. And usually those are expressed in terms of, you know, number of acreage of of parks per a group of population, per thousand people, something like that. And then a lot of times those those targets of acreage for parkland are also further broken down into the types of parks, whether they're neighborhood parks or larger, you know, community parks or regional type parks. We don't frequently get into the the specific of whether it's a soccer field versus a baseball field versus some other type of active recreation. It's usually more of, you know, active versus passive. But if that is a known, you know, limitation in the community, that's certainly something that we can put a little further effort into to help document if there's a known deficiency or a known, you know, need for more soccer fields. You know, we can address that as part of the the analysis as well.
I think that's a good idea, and I'll leave it to Recreation and Parks to enumerate what active uses are most in demand. And for background, I'll note that my concern is that with the Connect Menlo rezoning, which we called the update of the general plan, we leaned on the fact that we have an adjacent, very large natural open space park. That is, it was developed to appear and act as a natural open space. It's actually a landfill. And that serves to easily cover the acreage requirement. However, when you get out there, other than the birds and the trails, there is very little to do. And and that's very purposefully, it's a passive park. So that park does not serve for the active needs of any new residents. Not any of the thirty-one hundred. So those are my only comments for the EIR. Mr. Kale?
Thank you. I just wanted to tag on to two things that were mentioned. One is Mr. Zito's comments about the impacts to the educational system and not only just the high school, but with all the the new residential units coming in, there's going to be a need at some point for primary schools, secondary schools as well. And then just, I was going to also comment on what Chair Riggs just mentioned about the 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 park space or potentially the lack of park space. We do have Bayfront Park as well as Kelly Park on each end. But there's a lot of people that will be living in this area without really much open space other than Paseos in the center of this area. So I wanted to get that considered as well. Thank you.
Oh, I did have one other, I guess, just a clarification to ask for. The EIR studies impacts on adjacent neighborhoods, is that correct?
Yes, excuse me, specifically, you know, with looking at the transportation patterns as well as things like noise, air quality in terms of of health risks from from air pollutant generation.
So I just wanted to note that in terms of proximity, we have the North Fair Oaks area. In other words, nominally north of Marsh Road, we have Laurel Line Manor, nominally west of the railroad tracks and one-on-one. And these are both less than a mile from this new project or or about a mile. And including Haven Avenue, where we have produced a couple of large apartment buildings. And then more than a mile away is the Bell Haven neighborhood. So it would be appropriate to make sure that all three areas are looked at in terms of impacts. It appears that Marsh Road will be the most significant approach to this building and or this project rather. And so those are the most immediate Marsh Road neighbors. Oh, I should clarify that nominally north of Marsh Road are both the county residential area as well as Redwood City in addition to the strip of Haven Avenue that is Menlo Park. These, all three are bordering on Marsh Road right there before you get to Bay Road. All right, and that is oh, just one final comment, and I don't know whether this is so much consistent with SEQUA's requirements as what we might hope for in Menlo Park. What I think we don't want to see is a review of a fairly significant issue in Menlo Park, as you've heard tonight, which is transportation and traffic, and have the category conclude with the phrase unavoidable. Increasingly, this is a less than acceptable response, often indicating that the city of Menlo Park might have to coordinate with another jurisdiction as if that were not possible. So if it's, if it is possible for this report to avoid sidestepping a mitigation with that phrase, that would be much preferred. Had to ask.
Yeah, I I understand the the point and the frustration. There are some, you know, legal requirements sometimes that do come up. So, you know, I don't have the any specifics to point to, point you to right now. But, you know, if there's a roadway improvement that requires the approval of a neighboring jurisdiction, it's it's that's where we sometimes get stuck with these unavoidable conclusions because we don't have any guarantee that the neighboring jurisdiction will act in a particular manner. But, you know, not having gotten into the analysis, we haven't, we don't know if if that's an issue that's going to come up with this one. But certainly, we've, you know, I've made the note, and I am sure city staff are have made the note that that will be a big priority for us to to try to avoid any unavoidable impacts.
Yes, and and you will find that there are repeatedly such conditions where it becomes beholden on the city to step forward and coordinate with another jurisdiction. That is just part of life. As you can imagine, if in your work or personal life, you were told that unless it's directly within your control, you weren't responsible, your life would be a lot simpler, but you would fulfill a lot, a lot less with respect to your colleagues and neighbors. All right, yeah, well, thank you. And lacking any other questions or suggestions for the EIR? Don't see any. I will thank you very much and welcome to Menlo Park. And look forward to see you, seeing you in a couple of months.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I'll close the item F1 public hearing. And we will move on to item G1, which is the study session for this same project. And forgive me if I read again the subject of our study session. This is a request for a use permit, architectural control, vesting tentative map, heritage tree removal permits, below market rate housing agreement, and environmental review submitted by the Sabrato organization for one nineteen to one twenty-seven Independence Drive from twenty-five, I'm sorry, twelve oh five Chrysler Drive and one thirty Constitution Drive. This is a request for a use permit, architectural control, et cetera. In the RMU zoning district, proposed project would consist again of a major subdivision for sixty-seven for sale townhomes, construction of a three hundred and sixteen unit rental apartment building and an eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot office building. The applicant is requesting a use permit for bonus level development in exchange for the provision of community amenities in those numbers. The project also includes a hazardous materials use permit request to allow for diesel generators to operate in the event of an emergency. The proposed floor area ratio would be a hundred and forty-three percent or a maximum of a hundred and forty-eight percent is allowed with community amenities. The project proposed would consist of fifteen percent below market rate housing units, and the proposed project will be required to comply with the city's BMR program. Environmental review is required, as we've just discussed. The proposed project is considered a housing development project pursuant to the Housing Accountability Act. Ms. Mador, I'll turn it over to you for any further staff or applicant presentation. I am tempted to ask first, the proposal for office square footage is eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Can you remind us of how much office square footage is currently existing on these, on this collective site?
Yes, I'll just do that second to pull up that number. So the existing office and industrial area is a hundred and three thousand nine hundred square feet. So that would be a reduction in the commercial industrial area.
All right, and where the R and D space is a typically is a lower density of workers, is that correct?
I believe so. Right now, I don't know the exact uses or type of tenants in those buildings. The applicant may have more information on that if you're curious, but.
No, it has to do with city code. Currently, the hundred and three thousand square foot could be occupied entirely by office space.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so back to you and any further presentation?
Yeah, so this one will be very short. So this is the study session portion of the project. And what I really just want to do is pull up the slide. And it's just recapping the prompts we gave. And it's just recapping the prompts we gave you in the staff report. And these are some things that we are specifically asking for your feedback on, and they include site and building design, open space and Paseo design and activation, the possible incorporation of public serving commercial space, and any community amenity preferences, and lastly, below market rate units. So I just want to know as well that your feedback isn't limited to these items. So you can also, of course, provide comments on other items, either just like the things that we were specifically asking you about in the staff report. And then don't have any other comments or presentation at this time?
I'll have, I'll just briefly ask for clarification about our purview here. This particular kind of project under the Housing Accountability Act is limits our purview as previously described. When a bonus development level is offered, and the project puts that forward in exchange for community amenities, does that in any way change the purview of the commission in its review?
Requesting the bonus level does not change that.
However, the commission and the council do review the community amenities, is that correct?
Correct, so you can give them guidance on what kind of community amenities you would like to see as part of the project. They are locked into the community amenities that have been approved. So that's just one thing to consider, but that has a number of different items that you can consider as amenities.
All right, thank you. So I believe we can go straight to public comment on this study session. Again, the go to webinar control panel on your screen, if you are following this meeting on the web, offers a hand icon on the edge of the panel. If you click on that, you can make a comment regarding the project at this time. And again, we are specifically at this point looking at the design and program of the project and the, as described in the project description. So Mr. Tapia, do we have anyone who would like to speak on the design portion of the project?
Yes, Chair, it looks like we have two commenters. And with your permission, I will go ahead and introduce the first commenter.
Yes, please.
Okay, so Kim Novello, your microphone should be active now.
Thank you. I do feel like I have tons of notes and wish I had more time to comment. So I'd love to hear if there's a way to do that later. So I'll specifically get on what you were asking for. Regarding the design, I heard someone mention urban design, and I'm wondering, I consider Menlo Park to be a suburban area, so it was a beautiful design, I don't know that it has to be urban, I don't know that it has to be five stories. And regarding open space, they mentioned a park or something, I didn't even see it. I have a child, kids need space to play. I don't know who these, I'd like to know what type of families or what type of people they're trying to attract, how many bedrooms are in the, both the townhomes and the apartments, whether the BMR units are all apartments or are they townhomes as well? Commercial, I'd say put a grocery store in rather than offices. If you're going to live somewhere, it'd be nice to have somewhere you could walk, especially any new building in Menlo Park that you could walk to have your needs met. Yeah, amenity preferences, it's probably not an amenity. Just I think there needs to be more nature, more trees, spaces for families to go on nature hikes. And then it looks like half my time's gone, so going through my notes. Let's see. They mentioned it's fit well, and I was wondering why it's not LEED certified they're going for. Yeah, yeah, I didn't see any yard space or privacy for families if they're planning to live there. I have stayed in a dorm style place before, I think it was awful, and I can't imagine people actually wanting to live there. It doesn't sound like it's trying to ease the problem of the folks that are living in Menlo Park. It sounds like it's just trying to bring in more people to work here, and that's going to just cause a greater impact on our issues, our traffic, et cetera. I'm concerned about, I lived in Fair Oaks, and there wasn't a good, there was one grocery store that I didn't care to go to in that area. And if you're putting in more housing in East Menlo Park, it's all going to come up marsh. And everyone's, I live now in downtown, and I feel like everyone that's out there, if they want to go down, do any shopping, it's going to impact downtown. And so I just think that needs to be taken into consideration that if we're going to build housing, we need to have the support of grocery stores, pharmacies over there as well, not more office space. And again, connect nature, travel, sorry, my time's up. But I biked over there once, and I'd like to see a bike path that goes north along nature, and let's utilize, let's make that open nature space a place that people actually want to go and can access, it's hard to access right now, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Novell. And as you get involved with the city, you may want to check some of the other projects in this zone and what they propose with regard to outdoor spaces as well as what this proposes. Very much appreciate your comments about local traffic in local stores. Mr. Tapia, any other comment?
Yes, at this time, I will go ahead and introduce Pamela Jones. So Pamela Jones, your microphone, you should have the ability to activate it now.
Thank you. I have two comments I'd like to see included. First, I'd like to thank you for having 10 townhomes for sale to moderate income. I think that's really important if we want to have a stable community. On the other hand, a total of 84.5% of the apartments are studios and one bedrooms, which means that would be the transit part, people would be just in and out. I would like to see at least 25, 20% low income BMRs at all affordability levels. There's nothing that says you cannot do that. It just is, you don't have to. I also, in regards to amenities, I appreciate the outreach you're doing in the community. That's what's critical is to have the pulse of a community. I would like to offer one more thing, and that is if all of your developers put your money together, we could have a nice bike pedestrian bridge that connects the area that's going to have these five new developments over to the new Menlo Park Community Center, which will have playing fields, it'll have a senior center, there'll be youth activities, oh, there'll be a library there. Oh, it'll be all of the services that a neighborhood would like. And the council is going to be deciding on the pool tomorrow. It's when we do our projects in silos and think of terms of what we can do in our little bit that we often miss an opportunity that's a once in a lifetime. I encourage you to think about this simply because this project will probably be finished before yours will. They have a two year timeframe, and since Facebook is building it, it will be done in two years. And again, I wanted to thank you, though, for including 10 of the townhomes to moderate income. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And Mr., any other speakers?
At this time, I'm not seeing any other speakers, chair rigs.
Okay, thank you. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for questions and comments on the design and related issues as outlined by Ms. Mador in the staff report, including prompts on page two of the staff report. And on page 10, oops, sorry. On page 17, that seek to get our advice or comment on the list of issues. So do we have any commissioners with questions or comments? Mr. Barnes?
Good evening, again, thank you, and thanks to the applicant team and the secret consultants for laying that out for us so well. I have candidly, in no particular order, a mix of comments and some responses and some additional questions to kind of unpack what some of these planning commission considerations are. So just in starting the discussion, you know, I, seeing the project and seeing that Sabrata was bringing this forward, I was, you know, I have been struck with a difference in project that we're seeing now. I mean, I'm remembering back probably two years now that we did the Commonwealth Phase Three campus discussion, which was effectively, how do we shoehorn another building onto an existing parcel and then figure out how to do parking around it? And, you know, certainly from my, well, it went back and forth with planning commission. And certainly from my viewpoint on that, that was a largely unpleasant progress, process. And then I see this project, and I can't but help think that this project has been informed by the projects that have come before it, that have improved on discussions we've had before, and certainly shows what can be done when you're starting from scratch on, you know, on the parcels that they are and on a good amount of dirt. I mean, I see the mix of uses as it relates to housing being for sale for rent and then the commercial use. I think it's, you know, if I just start from parking, I think it's a wonderful use of the space, how they've integrated parking into their structures. They are working in the Connect Menlo Design Standards, which are, you know, quite prescriptive in doing it in a well, doing it in a way that I think makes really good use of materials. I think, you know, if I look at the for sale townhomes, I think they're warm and inviting. If I look at the materials associated with the multifamily, I think it's well done from a mix of material standpoint. I have a question on the design, the influence of the commercial piece, but I'll come back to that. And I think those two pieces certainly, you know, the residential pieces are very well done. And the commercial, if I can just understand a little bit more about what's it's referencing, you know, I'll be happy with that. I will note that, you know, as part of that EIR and that campus project, excuse me, campus corporate housing, that is part of the, that's part of the Facebook classic campus. And when we were doing the Connect Menlo general plan amendment for that, that was intended to be on the commercial, excuse me, the classic campus. And they were going to build that out, and clearly they haven't yet, but that's what that was allocated towards. You know, I, I hear the collapsing of the window for development referenced. And, you know, if we go back to when Connect Menlo was put together, there was no, everyone understood that the development was going to happen quickly. And, you know, you knew going into it that there were limited numbers of stakeholders in the area. I mean, you had Charlton, you had Sabrata, you had Facebook, you had Bohannon, you had Gray Star across the way, which had already started on Haven. So it was a blessing and a curse in that with the number of stakeholders that were involved in the area, it allowed for really progressive planning of how to use that space writ large. And you didn't have to deal with 50 different owners in order to come up with the interconnection of all the different parcels because the development was happening. So it's not unexpected by any stretch that the development is happening at the pace that it's happening. It's actually more surprising that given the downturn and what we're seeing, you know, from an economic standpoint, the pandemic, that it still is going forward. I'm more surprised than I am that it's continuing at its pace. But it's, that certainly was, you know, was to be seen. You know, and again, because there were a limited number of stakeholders, the development of Connect Menlo was so progressive in its sustainability requirements, in its, the ability to connect the Paseos, in its transportation outlook. The questions that I have that relate to the project, and I'll go to some of these planning committee, planning commission considerations. There's the first bullet point talks about site and building design. And the question put forward is, is a proposed layout of the buildings in relation to the proposed Menlo Portal project acceptable? And if staff could just talk to that for a moment as to what specifically we're looking at. I'm a little bit disadvantaged, I don't have the advantage of the full pack that we usually get, obviously, in COVID. So if someone could just talk, could show that on the screen and reference that particular question? And where are those two service lanes adjacent to each other?
So I think as far as plans, we may need to have the applicant presentation pulled up, and they may have a site plan that shows it. So on the independent side of the property, on the far left side of the townhomes, there is a driveway proposed on this project site. And then on Menlo Portal, on their right side of the apartment building, they're also proposing a service driveway along there. So it's just, does that seem?
And Katie, can someone do a share screen on that so we can see? It's got to be somewhere in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then maybe the applicant can help us out if they know of a page in their presentation that would show this maybe the best.
Even slide, there you go.
Yeah, so you can see on Lot A Townhomes. So along that left property line, along the left property line where my cursor is, that is where the project would be adjacent to the Menlo portal project. And we don't have a site plan of that project right now. But it's just kind of looking at how this But it's just kind of looking at how this property line is treated. Do we think that, or do you think that this seems acceptable? Do you want to see any other kind of like interaction between the two projects? Or if you have any other suggestions on that? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. So if I just follow on that, I don't, I couldn't, I don't have an opinion on whether they're more cross linked to each other. I do have a question as it relates to the service lane. I mean, is that something that staff would prefer to have? A service lane there? Is that, is, is that an underlying question there?
Um, I don't know that we have a preference to have a service lane in that location.
Okay. So as designed, the driver, the service lane would be adjacent to each other. Should the applicant teams coordinate project edge treatments? Okay, so I don't, I don't have an opinion on that. Thank you. Thank you for working me through that. And then related to the below market rate housing and touching on that, I'm not clear as to when the applicant is proposing a mix of very low, low and moderate. What is it that? Is the applicant proposal to comply, to combine the partial BMR unit requirements of the for sale rental units for an extra unit to be located apartment complex of the project except yes. So we don't want in loop fee. We don't mind if that's confirmed. So the difference is the applicant is proposing a very low, low and moderate as opposed to all low income units on this project. Is that the crux of the question? Because there's three tiers, three AMI tiers versus one tier for just low income. Is that the crux of the question?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of different things in there. I think the big thing is how they're splitting up the units instead of doing an in loop portion of the in loop fee. They're proposing the additional apartment unit. So that's like probably the, the main question. And then this probably also is connected to the community amenities as well. Like, do you want to see additional BMR units proposed as part of the project? And then, yeah, this project is also proposing a mix of units. So they're, instead of doing all low, doing low equivalent, which is allowed. So I mean, you could comment on that if you felt like it was more appropriate to do all low. But yeah, they are allowed to do the mix of different units to get to the equivalent of low. And that is for the rental apartments. The townhome, for sale townhomes are treated slightly different.
Okay. So if I talk to that, I am absolutely fine with the the extra unit being located in the apartment component of the project. And I would not want to see a payment of the in loop fee. I'm also, I also prefer having a mix of very low, low and moderate. And the reasoning behind that is it's so hard to get very low in any projects, which are not tax credit funded project. They generally are in different types of projects. You don't often see them in what are these predominant market rate projects. So for that reason, give me the lowest AMI level available. And in that case, it is the very low. So I would definitely want to see that in the project in tier up as opposed to clicking into one. And it also helps to read allocation to the city to get that very low. So that's where I sit on that. And then just talking to the, you know, space available in that area. Granted, there is a push on development, but there also is that corporate, excuse me, the community campus that's being to be constructed, excuse me, in the, in the neighborhood down there. And, you know, that's, it's got a, it's a larger footprint in terms of community space than Burgess is. So I, you know, I think the area birds, which services, you know, Menlo Park, Greater Menlo Park. I think it is doing well for community space. And I don't have a recollection of Bayfront Bedwell ever being in the discussion of being park space that was to serve the Bayfront area. It was more, it's an existing park that Facebook put money into to do well for themselves. That could be an amenity for their employees, but it was, Bayfront Bedwell was never considered an integral part in terms of it being calculated as park space for the Bayfront area other than an amenity. At least that's my recollection. So those are my comments that I have now. I may come back later, but I'll yield the floor to my other colleague. Thank you so much.
Mr. Doran?
Yeah, I'd like to just go through the questions that were posed to the commission myself. As far as the site and building design, I think it's very handsome project. I think it's laid out well. Obviously, a lot of thought went into it. I think the parking garage for the apartment building is really well executed, completely hidden from the street and all four sides. I like the way they did the podium on top of that. So I'm very happy with that parking garage. I don't really have an opinion on the office building parking garage. I think at this point, I haven't enough time, haven't had enough time with the plans. As far as the interaction with these buildings and Menlo Portal, again, I just, I don't have an opinion on that without seeing the adjacent plan. But considering this site independently, I think it's, it's very well done and laid out. I'm happy with the public open space. I think the Paseos are well done. So I don't have any reservations on that. The public serving, serving commercial space, I would definitely like to see in this project. There's going to be a lot of residents in this project itself. Not to mention all the other projects being built all around here. So I think there's going to be a great need in this neighborhood for communities serving amenities, restaurants, takeout food, shops of all kinds. So I'd really like to encourage the applicants to use some of the commercial space, the ground level commercial space for those kind of community serving retail uses. Community amenities. I really liked Pamela Jones' idea about the bike bridge. I think it's probably out of budget for this project itself, but it's definitely worth consideration. I think it's a great idea. I have no idea how much it costs, but I have a feeling it's expensive. I might encourage the Sabrada organization to see if they could get the Sabrada philanthropic organization interested in chipping in on that. I think that'd be a great community amenity. On the below market housing, I agree with Commissioner Barnes. I like to see a mix of different kinds, different levels of below market housing. I think that's valuable for the community as a whole. And with respect to the additional BMR unit instead of in loop fees, I definitely have a preference for an additional unit. I'd like to see the units built and I'd like to see the below market housing integrated with market rate housing. I think that's, again, good for the community as a whole. So I'd be very happy to see an additional unit built. Thanks.
Mr. Kev?
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Doran has said and have a few other comments. So appreciate all the housing and especially the BMR. It's great for the city and for the area. And of course, more BMR would be even more appreciated. For the design, the sighting is appropriate and the Paseo works really well. It's wide. It, it connects what it's supposed to connect. So I think that works. The only minor thing is the, we've seen this before in the other projects where there's a swimming pool down on level two. And then there's a five story building around it. So I think that whole area is going to be in shade for a lot of the time for, in the apartment. In general, I'm tempted to ask for less office space and more housing, but just looking at the, at the number of units on the site, it's a very dense project. We have a hundred and, we have 316 apartments in the apartment building and most of those are single, single bedroom units. So there's a lot of density there and there's not a lot of open space in the immediate area for the people who are going to live there, except for inside the courtyard, which could be in a lot of shadow, I think. So, but I am tempted to ask for some commercial space. There's, I, the way I understand it, there's none proposed here. And anything we can have would be, would be very useful for anyone who's living in this area. The design itself is, it's a contemporary design and it fits the area well and works with the other projects in the area. It's a handsome project. There's a couple minor things is that the the townhouses, the apartments, they are very linear and maybe even kind of boxy. There's nothing wrong with that, but it, it seems like they're missing some residential elements, whether it's roof slopes or curves, sort of the language we usually see for, for housing, especially the townhouses. I think that might help to read those as more a place to live than a place to work. And the only other comment I have is about the, the office building. I think that works really well. The entry is very de-emphasized. And I think it would be appropriate to, to highlight that as a, as where you're supposed to go when you're, when you have business in that building. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Tate?
I also like the, the look of the project, but I do have comments around housing, of course. I would like to see very low, like the other commissioners have said. And I'd also like to see, instead of another rental unit, another for sale unit, but definitely lower income, below moderate. I think that that's important to allow people to have that access to purchase. It grounds folks and the units are bigger, which is generally what low income people need. So I highly encourage having another for sale unit at low income, not moderate. And as far as amenities are concerned, I do like the idea of the bridge and, and pooling resources with the other developers to try to make it happen. And also I just want to make sure that we are mindful when we're looking at amenities that when Connect Menlo was rolled out, the amenities were supposed to be tied to Bellhaven residents. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. DeCarty?
Would it be okay to ask a clarifying question of the applicant?
Of course.
This is a question about the integration of the office building with residential and the green space that's above the proposed parking garage. Will that be open to everybody? And given that it's higher, if I'm a resident, how do I get there? It looked like there were stairs or something. If you could just clarify that integration between the office building and the residential areas.
Hi, so this is Peter Ty from the Sabrada organization. The green space above the parking is meant to be exclusive for the office user.
So in the, so just as a clarification, and when you were talking about in your opening presentation about the integration of the entire site, it really is the integration of the residential in the entire site. And then the, the office really is almost completely separate in terms of anybody who lives there using any of that space or having access to it. Is that a fair way of saying that?
The office is integrated with the, the front area along Chrysler and Independence. You've got that closet area before the main entrance. So there is open space there for the public to enjoy. But the, the open space above the garage is private.
Great, thank you. And then can I ask about the, I really appreciate, and I'm echoing some of the conversation about the community amenities and how important it is to connect with the community and really appreciated your slide, talking about the number of people you've spoken with and organizations. And then also appreciated that you lifted up what you've been hearing back. Can you say a little bit more about how much more outreach you'll do? And I think to Commissioner Tate's comment that the community is, is the residence of Bellhaven. And while this is slightly, this project is sort of on one end, just a little bit more about how much more outreach you plan to do as you zero in on what your proposed community amenities would be.
Yeah, it's the, our, our community outreach is an ongoing process and there's no stop. There's only a start and we started that process when we began this project. And so we've been gathering a lot of input from everybody. And as you can imagine during COVID, it's been pretty hard to host events. So we've been reaching out to people and having kind of one-on-one phone calls, Zoom meetings. But we intend to continue to have more. We actually were going to go do a presentation for the, you know, for the kids at Beechwood Elementary. But with COVID hitting at the end of last year, that didn't work out. It actually was going to be a pretty fun event with the PTA and with the students. You know, with everything that's going on with kind of in-person teaching and distance learning and everything else, it just didn't feel right to add that. So we're trying to find creative ways in which we can do outreach. Thinking about hosting, when the weather gets better, hosting a publicly distanced event, possibly in person. So all these ideas that we want to be, you know, very mindful and respectful of kind of the pandemic that's going on. By no means is our process stopped at this point. We plan on continuing on as best we can. And to the extent that any of the commissioners here or anybody in the community have recommendations on who we should speak to, you know, we're open ears. Our phone and our emails are always available and we will be very responsive to everybody. I'm always available for a phone call or a meeting. I will, I've always said, I will listen. I can never promise I can deliver on everything that you want, but I'm happy to listen to ideas. And that bridge idea that has been mentioned is actually something that we've explored. You know, and, you know, it's, we've brought it up to different community members. So it's, it's something that we've talked about. Again, it's something, it's a little bit difficult to put together. But, you know, again, wild ideas are only wild until you can get, you know, people behind it. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And you're, you know, the whole organization's commitment to community, including the philanthropies. And then my last follow-up question, excuse me. You know, from the public comment and from what you've heard back from the community, the traffic is such a huge question. How are you all, and, and when we have these, these conversations, the specifics of a transportation demand management plan come way, way down. We never get the specifics out of that, but I would sure appreciate hearing, how are you thinking about a transportation demand management plan and limiting those impacts, given, you know, the cumulative impact in the community and what you've heard from the community and from speakers this evening? Could you talk about that a bit more?
Yeah, no, we've heard out loud and clear about traffic concerns. I think the best way to try to mitigate traffic impacts are to provide alternative methods, alternative modes of transportation, whether that's walking, whether that's biking. So again, that bridge idea could be interesting. Other things we've explored, for example, in the residential project, there's a company called Envoy. Think of it as like the zip car with electric cars. So what it would do is, you know, instead of having residents have multiple cars, you have a fleet of cars within the unit, within the complex that can be rented out and so try to remove cars. So we're exploring options at this point, you know, again, this is a proposal. This is our application and we're trying to figure out ways, creative ways to resolve some of the concerns that we're hearing from the community.
And then I'm going to ask one last sort of pie in the sky question to your point about outlandish ideas are only outlandish until they have support. All else being equal, All else being equal, do you like building parking spaces? Like, I mean, wouldn't you rather build something else besides parking spaces?
Yes, I'd rather create spaces and, and places for people to enjoy. But again, you know, the Bay Area lacks a general infrastructure for people to kind of get out of cars. I myself have spent, you know, a lot of time in Asia, um, you know, growing up. And, you know, you don't need, uh, connect, you know, need a car and you don't need a parking space. Those are a premium, but it's because, you know, they do have infrastructure there for people to get around. And, uh, right now we don't have that. So people need to get to point A to point B. So, you know, it's a necessary evil.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for your time on the clarification questions. I'll briefly go down the list, uh, as well. For feedback on the site and building design, I would echo that I think it's nicely designed. I think it works well with the site. I think the basics on the proposed materials all look good. I'd echo Commissioner Cale. I appreciate his architectural eye and his language. But I do think some of the ways to signal that the residential is residential might be nice in that mix. On the public open space, I think it's a shame about the segregation between, you know, what looks like from, you look straight down on it. There's a bunch of green associated with the office building that's not accessible to folks who live there. And obviously, um, people are, are there at different times. Sort of wish that could be integrated. Part of the problem is that that's on top of a parking garage. But in general, I, you know, I, I think the, you know, public open space, the way it's laid out can make sense. Having that, that space that is sort of the widest there between the two sections of townhomes and having that activated so that it's friendly for families and kids, per some of the public comment, would be nice to see. Um, on the BMR, I completely agree with, uh, my fellow commissioners on, um, being able to get to very low as much as possible. And with, uh, Ms. Jones's comment about, you know, a greater percentage, although obviously it's a question of penciling out, but, but it's still a huge issue that we have to deal with. And then the, on the public serving commercial space in the community amenity, this is one where I really just do think we have to hear from the community. I think it's a frustration that, and I understand it. So you've got a list of community amenities that was designed a while ago. Some of them are moot at this point, especially what's given, uh, with the community center now. And some of them are not going to be the highest priorities for people. But I still think within those, to be able to really drill down and hear from folks what they want, and especially in sort of the cost benefit of some of these things. Because I think it's really hard, you know, one more unit of below-market housing, which could be a community benefit, is one unit to one set of folks. And as an example, if it's $10,000 for an acre of trees, you know, the equivalent is you could have the entirety of Bellhaven with trees on every single gap in its, um, public spaces and on the, um, parkways by the roads. And so I think when, when folks are reaching out with the community, I'm just, um, we've, we've heard this on a lot of projects, and it's why I'm really grateful that you all are going to keep on reaching out. But I think really reaching out to the community and helping the community understand what's possible and what dollars can go to and getting feedback, um, about this moment in time would be terrific. And that's even on the specifics of the projects. And I completely concur with comments that it would be nice to be able to look more holistically so that, uh, the sum is greater than the individual parts in this mix. And then my last, um, one or two things. First, um, with your diesel generator, I really encourage you to look at a battery alternative. Cost of batteries are way down. Before you lock in all the uses and spaces, if in fact you need a little bit more space for a battery alternative than a diesel generator, um, I think that would be fantastic so that the entire project was actually all electric. Uh, and then, um, just a note that you are taking down a lot of heritage trees. And so appreciate the replacements onsite, but also would encourage, and I don't know, if you're talking with the city or the, um, Environmental Quality Commission, but heritage trees and supporting, um, getting more trees elsewhere in Bellhaven, given the number of heritage trees that are coming down, would sure appreciate that. And, um, just to echo, I think it's a really great project. Appreciate your commitment to the community and, um, look forward to seeing next steps.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarty. I think, uh, I was just gonna say everyone has had a chance, but Mr. Barnes?
Yes, thank you. You know, I'm looking through the community amenities and I'm, and I'm struck with how important the category of jobs and training at M2 area companies is. Job opportunities for residents, education enrichment programs for young adults, job, uh, training programs and education center, paid internships and scholarships for young adults. So I look at that, and I think in the context of where we are, and I think the inequities we're seeing in the pandemic where if you're educated or you've got a degree or you've got a, if you've got a skill that is perceived as being valued in the marketplace, uh, you're doing okay. And if you're not, you're not. And I think Sobrato may be uniquely positioned to make some of this happen, given Sobrato's breadth, uh, in the marketplace and influence in the marketplace. So I will wholeheartedly add my support for under jobs and training, A, B, C, and D, in any mix of those, you know, far in excess of a coffee shop or another amenity which effectively makes life easier for the residents of a particular apartment building. I think this is critical. I think it's never been more important. And I think this is a good fit for, uh, what uniquely, uh, Sobrato can bring, uh, to the table from its influence in Silicon Valley. So this is a very strong endorsement for that. And what I wanted to double back on is if the applicant would be so kind as just to show the, rendering of the commercial building again, I had a question on that in the presentation.
I actually don't have control over the presentation with staff mind displaying it.
We, um, excuse me, Peter, do you have a sheet, uh, number that might be easier for us to quickly find?
Yeah, 16 and 17.
Okay, great, thanks.
There we are. Just say a little bit more, if you would, about the, the style of that, what you're going for.
You know, I'll turn that to, uh, Ted Court. Ted, would you mind commenting on the office design?
Sure. Is my, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Modern, uh, something that's airy and light with a lot of, um, open visual access both in and out to it. A modern, crisp, timeless design, uh, that will provide very nice, flexible collaborative space for those that are working in it. Not a super complicated building, but one that will look clean and crisp for many years to come. And one that makes a nice gesture towards the street and provides a pedestrian scale base, um, both along Independence and Chrysler with landscaping.
It's got so much of a Lincoln Center feel to it. And is the envisioned use to be largely the, the collaborative open space built out for that, that you had referenced earlier? Do you see many interior walls in there? Or how you can, how do you see that interior space being used?
In, and Peter, you please, um, tell me if I say the wrong thing, but recently, most, most office buildings have, have kind of turned into collaborative spaces with fewer private offices, uh, where people are working together. Years ago, it used to be everyone had a 10-foot office and you had very little, um, interaction with other people. It seems to have changed so that people are wanting to work together in larger, open, undivided spaces. So this building has window, mullion structure to accommodate offices, conference rooms, wherever you want them. It would work for private offices, but generally people have been drawn towards more open space, open collaborative space in recent years.
And then I'll add that, you know, one of the things that, um, you know, we think is happening in the office market, you know, with COVID, you know, a lot, there's, there's gonna be much more kind of work from home possibilities. More employers are gonna allow people to work one to two days from home. So, you know, if you have to do kind of head-down work and kind of, you know, bang through some stuff, you're probably gonna do that at home. But the office is gonna be more of, it's kind of a collaborative space for people to get together, more of a social environment, uh, exchange of ideas, uh, foster creativity. So I think this design helps, um, with all of that.
Does that at all influence your estimation of how many employees per thousand square feet calculations?
Right now, uh, it's uncertain. You know, we're still in the middle of the pandemic, so we're, I'm, I'm not sure. But it may even out to kind of be what is gonna be the industry standard at this point, uh, but still TBD.
Sure. Okay, I'm, I'm thinking aloud. Does a collaborative environment invite more people in and out or less people? And how many do you get in there? Okay, thank you for explaining that. I appreciate that. That's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Tate, follow-up?
Sorry, I lost my screen for a second. Um, I'd like to thank Chair, um, excuse me, Commissioner Barnes for, um, tickling on the training, uh, component and, um, where we are right now in the pandemic and how, how important that is. And also I just wanted to, um, to say that when we were in the process of collect, uh, Connect Menlo, Commissioner Barnes and I both sat on the, on the advisory commission. One of the conversations had been about having a training center somewhere over in this, in this area that we're, uh, looking at tonight. And no one ever stepped up to, to, um, own that. And, um, I don't know, maybe that could be something to use in part of that commercial space, something that's actually, uh, would lead to sustainable employment as opposed to, well, I guess we, we probably won't be going back to, to, um, big cafeterias anytime soon, but, um, you understand what I mean. Something that is equitable and sustainable to get people out and, and making a living where they can't afford to live here. That would be great if, if Sobrano, with their long arms, um, of philanthropy, wanted to, to take that on in part of that space. Thank you.
Mr. Dawes?
Just wanted to clarify something from my, uh, previous comments. When I endorsed the idea of public-serving commercial space and retail as part of the commercial space, and I'm talking about neighborhood amenities, I didn't mean to imply that that would count as a community amenity. Obviously, community amenities, uh, to qualify for the bonus level of development are a separate category. I was just thinking about appropriate uses of the commercial space within this project. And I do believe that given the number of residents here, the number of workers in this project and all the other ones on every side of it, that there will be a demand for neighborhood services so people don't have to get in a car every time, you know, they wanna, they wanna pick anything up. I think that there is, there is a need for that in this neighborhood.
All right, um, other follow-up questions? All right, I, I do have a couple of comments to make. To a large degree, I, I want to echo the comments that many of the comments that have been made by my fellow commissioners. And, uh, certainly the architecture overall and the massings are, uh, very amenable. I think the word handsome has been used a couple of times, and I'll echo that. And, uh, I agree that if we can get an additional for-sale unit rather than a partial in Luffy, that is absolutely a preferable item on that subject. I also would back the three comments made regarding the potential for either job opportunities or training. Absolutely, uh, you know, give a man a fish, he eats for one day, so. And then, um, to some more specifics regarding, um, site and building design, I think that's pretty much my remaining subject, uh, which would be, first, I'd, I'd like to ask staff if they can put on screen any view of the parking garage, the, the, uh, office building parking. I believe there's a garage facade at the back left corner or something. If, if there is an image there that may just be an elevation rather than a rendering.
Yeah, it's gonna be whatever we have in the applicant's presentation, I think, again.
It would be slide 17.
Thank you, Mr. Tsai. Right, so the parking area is not defined with any screening at this time, is that right?
Peter, should I answer that?
Yes, please.
So if you look at where it says 267 parking stalls with a little red dot above it, there's the appearance of a mural that goes left to right there. And our thought was that you could possibly use a stenciled metal panel to create that feel and have natural ventilation go on as well. And so we still need some work to do on, on fine details on this project, but we thought that you could use that type of a feature to provide natural ventilation, but also have an attractive, really interesting wall there. And that image that's shown is a recollection of a, of the wetlands surrounding this, this general area. But it's an early concept at this point.
All right, that's understandable. And, um, there were a couple of comments regarding the vernacular for the townhomes in particular and the, uh, residential sense thereof. I would like to echo that. I think possibly the most challenging aspect of the townhome designs are not that they're modern or that they, uh, use blocks and forms, which have been successfully used right here in Menlo Park and, and certainly elsewhere. But that particular form that is the inverted U, um, that occurs, trying to recall which, uh, which street that faces or whether it's internal. The mass seems heavy and a bit awkward and may, um, be making it difficult for a residential sense to come through. The apartment building I'd find quite attractive, but from the images we have to look at, the, uh, identification of the entry is not strong. I think that's a particularly important point, well, in any architecture, but, if you look at historic examples, whether they are, um, palazzos in Italy, which are, of course, are primarily apartment flats, or, um, Manhattan residential towers, or anything before or after. Manhattan residential towers, um, or anything before or after, the idea of a central entry is celebrated. So that there is an identity and yes, you identify that entry just as much as a couple of hundred other people do, but it's still the entry to the building. And then in terms of, uh, the office building, I'm trying to recall whether, uh, there was an earlier comment about entry there, I think perhaps from Mr. Kale. Again, um, an entry is something that really needs to draw a, a person in. What we have, uh, for the office building is, I think, very much a result of our own requirements for modulation in our design guidelines, which I have regretted since the very first project was submitted under the downtown specific plan with very similar guidelines. Where it tends to push designer after designer to recess the middle of a large facade at the first level and recess it further at the second level. And at least you didn't do this. We had multiple examples where that middle recess was also taller than the rest of the building. It was, uh, unfortunate, um, and of our making. So, I don't know how much, uh, better of an integration of that long facade is possible. But having a stronger entry at the pedestrian first floor level, pedestrian in this case being five foot above grade, um, would help a great deal in, in my humble opinion. That was, uh, I think your sheet A 7.03 using the, um, architectural, uh, numbering. Then I have a, just a confirming question, um, regarding the landscaping, really only one. You have hired a particularly talented, uh, firm with a very long history in the Bay Area. I just wanted to ask about the reference to, um, large shade trees on the Paseo. Um, I saw a lot of what I call patio or decorative trees and the, uh, on the list. And, uh, could you just clarify what, uh, what shade trees, in other words, canopy or in Menlo Park speak, potential heritage trees are planted along the Paseo?
Jake, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, sorry, I was, uh, getting my cell phone muted. Yeah, and then 10, I'm trying to see what we had, what we had.
One of the trees called out is, uh, initial M E T dash E X C, and I wasn't even able to find it on the, uh,
That Metrocedrus. Yeah, maybe that's not on the list, but it's, that, we're kind of, it's an evergreen Australian tree, dense kind of canopy, used more of the kind of as a buffer on the edge, would get kind of tall along there and cast a good shadow over parts of that Paseo. But we do have like some oaks that are going along the edges. And that, that's, and then as you go down the one between the townhomes and apartments, to the tilia, and I think we had, um, on this parva floor, it's an evergreen elm tree, which gets a nice broad canopy with a nice dappled shade for it. So kind of a mix, um, we do have the larger canopy trees like the oaks and the elm trees, and then some of the more taller columnar ones when you get on the tighter spaces.
All right, appreciated. Thank you. And then, uh, finally, there was, uh, I'm sorry, going back, uh, to, uh, architecture and, and this is potentially a landscape issue, but at the moment it looks like, uh, the, uh, campus plan issue. When the fly through, um, as you come down, uh, the Paseo, between residential units, you come upon the office building and the change in aesthetic is, uh, sharp. The proximity of the office building to the residential, of course, is, is, uh, well, it's quite a bit closer than one normally would have. In contrast with conventional zoning, that's part of mixed use. But I'm looking for some kind of a transition from the residential area to this massive five-story wall in, um, with a great deal of glass and light. Can you talk to me a bit about how that is seen from residential, whether we are counting on, uh, the growth of trees here? Something to, uh, to address this transition?
I muted myself and I don't know if that's all for me to answer, but I mean, there, the transition area between the two, we do have, um, some larger trees there too. Saltesh, looks like, um, another large canopy tree, it's kind of a buffer on the backside of that. Intent is, you know, we have, we have the same street trees and carry some of the similar plant, under story.
Could we see that in, in somewhere, like particularly like to see the, that, moment in the fly through, if that's possible, but maybe it, you have a rendering of the office building as seen from, between the residential buildings, would be the same thing?
I, this is, this is 10. I don't think in this package we do have a rendering from that view. We did talk about having the potential for a green wall, uh, on portion of that. Again, it's the lowest portion of the project because it's the, it's the area where the parking, um, component slips in. So it's not as tall as the building itself. It's, it's the area at the edge of that deck, which is a lower elevation. And we thought that maybe part of that deck could have a green wall on it to link back into the landscaping as well. But that's not shown in this package of drawings that you have this evening.
All right, well, what, what can you show me? I mean, um,
If you go to the fly through, if staff will mind bringing it back up about minute 1:25, I believe is what Chair Riggs is looking for in terms of the view. And then right about here.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much the, the spot right there where you go suddenly to a, um, a very different environment that feels like it's right across the street, so to speak.
Yeah, we, we do have a, at least at this scale, there's a hint of the idea of that green wall. That we can develop further and trees would also make a big difference if they were taller in that location as well.
Yeah, that, that might be something just for us to spend a little more time on trying to show the intent right there. Um, yeah, they're showing some of the, the real texture of the planting that's supposed to be on there and the, the scale of the, the things that are actually in the ground there to work on that. Get that ready for the next time we're running it.
It, it might help to have, uh, you know how a sense of space is created by, even by a very transparent screen, it still stops the eye because there's still a line, even if it's almost imaginary. Potentially, there, therefore could be a, a row of trees at either side of what appears to be the access road in between the office and residential. So that then there would be two screens, if you know what I mean. But then put the office building two tiers away from the residential rather than one.
Yeah, you know, like kind of tighten up that view out at the end to give it a, a close, a little bit more of a closure.
Yeah, it may not be a literal closure and probably should be, but, um, you know, even the branches of, uh, newly budding trees in the spring already offer this feeling of a, uh, but yeah, I, I guess a screen in the literal sense of, uh, where it's a wall, it's, it's just a, a filter. Um, that, that's an idea for that anyway. Um, so I appreciate, uh, your, um, thoughts on that. And, um, other than reminding us as, um, I feel I often have to do because the major issue, for neighborhoods, uh, which are not, um, necessarily a neighborhood to the south or the east and particularly with a Marsh Road access, it's certainly neighborhoods to the north and the west. Traffic is the larger issue and, uh, very much appreciate Mr. DeCarty's, um, prompts about what can we do to show a visible, um, alternative to, uh, additional solo vehicular traffic. And I also must say I appreciated Mr. Tay's, uh, response that the best way to get people out of their cars is to offer a viable alternative. I can only say, uh, hear, hear to that. And with that, um, I'll say thank you for, um, very attractive project that's coming along very nicely. And, um, thank you for being here tonight and look forward to seeing this in the next stage.
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, uh, that closes our study session. And it brings up, sorry, too much paper here. Brings up our project F 333 Marmona. This would be under regular business and it's a determination of a substantial conformance. This is a review of the staff determination that changes to the roofing material and window or door alterations are in substantial conformance with the previous approvals here at the planning commission. Do we have a presentation on, on this, um, issue, uh, in particular regarding your roofing material? We do?
We do. We have a number of slides, Ori Paz here, uh, representing, uh, planning division staff. We have no updates to the memo at this time, but there are slides available as well as some photos that were provided by the applicant and, uh, staff and the applicant are available to answer questions.
All right, thank you. Um, and Mr. Buzz, do we normally take, uh, public comment on the determination of substantial conformance?
If this is a regular business item, I'll turn to Kyle.
Uh, yeah, so it's up to the chairs per view. I would recommend, um, opening up to public comment if anyone is interested in commenting on, on this item. I think that's a good standard practice. It's not a public hearing, but in regular business, we should do, uh, public comment for standard, uh, practice. And then, uh, I think absent of that, uh, the commission's review here is really about staff's determination of substantial conformance. If the planning commission determines that it's not substantially consistent or in compliance with the approved project, it would need to go back through the review process. So, so tonight's decision or determination is really on the substantial conformance itself.
All right, well, um, airing on the conservative side, uh, I tend to agree that we should, uh, take a moment to open it up the public comment. I will first just ask, uh, for a description of the changes, although I, I recall what they were. If you'd prefer, I can mention them. Mr. Paz?
Certainly, if you want to read the, read them from, uh, the agenda, or I'd be happy to, to go through them.
No, I've read the agenda, which is just changes to the roofing material and window or door alterations. For example, the roofing material has been proposed to change from standing seam metal to, um, asphalt shingle. I don't recall exactly what the window and door alterations are.
Oh, okay. Um, so I'd be happy to go through those. And then I believe we have the, the list of changes available as well. I'm speaking to those behind the scenes if we, um, well, that was up. Thank you. This will be helpful to, to illustrate. Um, so you may recall as part of the, uh, conditions of approval, the project was required to reduce its overall height by one foot. And so the proportions of the windows changed, uh, during the building permit stage and those, those have changed again. So there's, there's a number of window changes that are highlighted here. You can see the approved version on the right half of the drawing and then on the left, the proposed changes with this building permit application. So some changes to, to fit to the proportion of the, the new height, the plate height at the first floor was reduced by one foot. The most substantial change is the change from sta, from standing seam metal at the second floor roof, uh, to comp shingle, which is shown, so a solid highlighted, um, in this, in this drawing. There was also a reduction, or sorry, an increase in the height of the, the metal door, um, to the, I believe that's the garage on the left side. And then if we scroll down to the next beat, we can see the rear and right sides, which also feature, can we, can we advance this slide? Do I have control of this? I do have control of this. Oh, sorry about that. I'm, I'm telling myself to do something. Um, okay, so here we'll see the rear and the right elevation. Um, and you can see the, the windows changed on the first floor and then you'll see that, that second floor roof material change as well.
Interesting window pattern. Um, so, uh, thank you for that. And, um, so I'll just take a moment to see if there are any public comments, uh, if anyone is watching. So again, uh, the go-to-meeting control panel on the right side of your screen contains on its edge a hand icon. And if you click on that, you are able to, this will tell staff that you would like to make comment, um, to this, uh, to this review at this time. So this would be the right time to, to click on that and staff will acknowledge.
We don't need chair rigs, members of the commission and members of the public at this time. I'm not showing any public commenters, but we can give it a second or two as usual.
Mr. Paz, is the applicant tuned in on on this as far as you know?
Yes, they are. We do have Anna Felver with TJ Holmes. And 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 I'm not sure if you'd like to present some of the slides as well. And provided photos of the work in progress.
Yeah, this is a good time. Just to reiterate, we did have the planning approved set on the right hand side of that exhibit. And we were requested to drop the plate height. So windows have changed, and that's why we highlighted those and we bringing them to your attention to just note that, you know, because of these changes, of course, windows will be adjusted in the building review. And some of again, a door was adjusted to be a little bit larger. This is something that just kind of happens throughout building review is minor things such as the man door, eight O doors are considered better than the six, eight doors to allow for more accessibility. And but what our main concern was just to make sure that we're trying to make our building submittal match the approved planning submittal. So that left hand side saying proposed, we're just highlighting that, yes, there is slightly different. We have bullet windows rather than the two oh three oh, I believe on the right hand side. And that was due to, again, the the plate height change. Our major request is the standing seam metal roof. We have photos that are below if you want to go to those. We're requesting this one because we have a potential buyer. There's concerns about noise on metal roofs and hearing rain and and whatnot. So that's one factor. The other is we want to install solar. And we can install solar on a net standing seam metal roof. There's not a problem with that. It's just a little bit more involved than an asphalt shingle roof. So we're proposing the request to since it is on the second floor only, it is more hidden from the main view if we could switch that to an asphalt shingle roof in order to allow us to install the solar a little bit easier and also extend it easier. We're going from usually there's a boot that has to be installed with a metal roof and we'd like to go with as more of a Z clip, which is more common or comp shingle. So that's something that we are just aware of in the building process. We want to make sure that we can build this with more ease and then, of course, provide address the noise concern that potentially can come up. And the photos, if you could go down to the photos or thank you, they're further down. These are just some of the photos of of the building thus far and what you'd be seeing. There's another one that's across the street. It's a little bit better. That one. So that's what you'd be seeing across the street. Again, we do have that first level standing seam metal roof that'll be retained as it is really visible. Our request is that we look can revisit the second floor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Tapia, if there had not been any indicators of a public speaker, I will close public comment.
That is correct, Chair. No comments at this time.
All right, I will close public comment. And then I will admit to being the one who asked for this to come before us to look at the substantial conformance. I don't personally have any issue with, in fact, it quite makes sense to adjust the windows and I even like the higher man door into the garage. I noticed that the gable vent has been deleted. I don't know that that's a terribly big issue. But the change in the roof spec does grab me. I'm afraid that this commission has seen multiple presentations by developer teams to have exterior materials that are approved. And then nine months later, we get a request for a change to make the exterior materials more economical. It is such a pattern that it, I have to admit, it gets my attention. In particular, the standing seam metal roof is quite a different quality level from the shingle roof that is, you know, an asphalt shingle roof. And while in some cases an asphalt shingle roofed project will have a decorative bay that has sheet metal of some kind as as a small roof. And this is part of a tradition in the metal works for, well, certainly beyond beyond a century. To have the large larger roof on the upper floor be a downgrade from the lower roof is not consistent with any particular architectural style and frankly, I think would look like someone bought a house. The metal roof leaked and all they could afford to replace it with was shingles. So I I do think this is an unfortunate change. And I think it's unfortunate to once again see a request to reduce the quality of a project that's already been approved. So I don't find this to be in substantial conformance. It might be that if it's brought back to us, we might decide, well, we would have approved this at the beginning or maybe not. Or maybe we would have asked, it's a nice project. Could you just have the metal roof everywhere? And then finally, I'll just comment that I've recently managed the completion of two roughly 10,000 square foot wood sided buildings with standing seam metal roofs. Both of them have solar entirely across the south face. And there were no issues whatsoever. In fact, when you mount solar to a standing seam metal roof, all the parts needed for the mounting are off the shelf. And any penetrations to the roof are made neatly with a metal to metal connection to assure waterproofing and it's considered the higher quality way to make this installation. So I can't help but want to call for a pause on this automatic approval. So that's my approach and like to see if anyone else has comments on this particular change. Mr. Kale.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I think all the improvements noted are 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 all the changes that are improvements with the with the exception of the the roof change. The noted reason a couple of times is that it's easier on composition shingles, which it might be a little bit, but I think it's a mistake to do to to make this change. It's it's either got to be all asphalt shingles or all metal roof, but a combination just doesn't work and it looks like a mistake. Thank you.
Any other comments or Mr. Barnes?
So I'm going to struggle with the dichotomy of a or whether a metal and a composition roof can exist together. But before I go into that struggle, I want to back up and I want to really want to recognize that in project changes happen and you know, but so I I think I fundamentally agree with staff's agreement that the change on the top roof to comp shingle. While it may aesthetically may not be the preference of some individuals, I don't think that it necessarily changes the spirit of the project. And I'll say that from from two perspectives. One is just a plain perspective. I live around the corner from this project and it's beautiful. And what the pictures don't show is the wood siding that's on the side of the house, the vertical wood treatments on the exterior. And it worked, everything works well together. So if I if I think about how deleterious is a change of a of a composition single roof that's from looking at this house would be hard to see from the sides of it. I think it's within the I think it's within the prerogative of the builder of the house. And I don't, I don't make a distinction between whether TJ Holmes is building it or, you know, Fred the plumber is building it. I remember when I did my home and, you know, the reason why we had a long session, maybe a year and a half ago to discuss substantial conformance was, you know, how do we make it easier for in project changes if they don't change the spirit of the agreement? And I know, for instance, in my house, when I changed from composition shingle to cedar shingle, I had to come back to plan and commission and I, you know, to this day, don't understand the reason why. And on this one, I have to think that it is in substantial conformance, because I don't think the top roof really makes enough of a difference in the scope of the overall project for what they're looking to accomplish to make it come back again. I think it's it may not be an aesthetic choice that that I would make, but I don't think it's cause for it to come back. You know, I think it's suggesting whether the applicant wants to consider going all asphalt shingle. I think that, you know, certainly would be acceptable, but even if they don't, even if they keep metal in one place and encompassing on the top, I think it's fine. I think it, I think it's not a significant enough design element to the overall project for the neighborhood to see that makes it come back. And that's my, that's my benchmark, you know, is it now enough of a change? And in my opinion, it's not so. I agree with the substantial conformance. Opinion given by Sam.
Thank you. Any other comments on the subject? All right. So again, this is to determine whether or not it should come back for discussion to change the roof or whether it should just happen at at a staff level. So rather than extend this any further, I think I'll call for a vote. And I guess it would still be motion and second. So I'll make a make a motion that the roof change specifically is not substantially in conformance with our approval of the original building with a particular siding and the particular roofing. And do I have a second? Mr. Kale. Okay. Um. All right. So, oh, Mr. DeCarty.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes.
Are we bringing this back? The vote on this is to bring it back for a discussion at planning commission. Is that correct?
It is, assuming that the applicant wants to move forward with this this part of the list of changes. Yes. There would be no further planning commission action if the applicant left the roof as approved by us previously.
For the chair, may I make a clarification? So I just want to confirm. So if if the commission tonight votes that it is not a substantial conformance, I just want to clarify that the bringing it back would be a full use permit revision. And so just to clarify, that is, you know, public hearing notices, staff review, staff report. I just want to make it clear. It's not simply bringing it back for discussion. It would be bringing it back through that use permit revision process. I think that's what we were all saying. I wanted to just clarify.
Yes.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or clarifications? All right, then let us vote. All in favor, I guess, raise hand and I'll call out numbers, names. All right, so we have Mr. Kale, Mr. Doran and myself, Mr. Riggs in favor of the motion that it is not substantially conforming and all those opposed. We have opposed Mr. DeCarty, Mr. Barnes and Ms. Tate. So three, three, that motion does not pass. Do I hear any other motions? Mr. Barnes.
I'd like to make a motion that three, three, three Marmona is in fact in substantial conformance.
And second?
Can I ask a clarifying question again? Do we need another motion? Why can't we just be done with it?
That's a good question. Mr. Prada.
I am looking that up, but I believe Commissioner Doran may have a statement on that. I saw his hand go up first, so.
Mr. Doran.
Through the chair, I'll defer to him if you like.
Actually, no such luck because I was going to ask the question whether the chair had the casting vote. A lot of commissions and boards have enshrined in their bylaws, which unfortunately we don't have, that a tie vote can be decided by the vote of the chair. So I was actually going to pose the question to you, Mr. Prada.
I think actually I can answer that. I'm pretty sure that in Menlo Park, there is no tipping of the scales by the chair. So we're all, we all vote.
I know that one off the top of my head. Give me a second. Hang on. Little rusty on my planning commission liaison duties. So in a quick read here, I do not believe the commission needs to act. Just given that the vote was to find it not in substantial conformance. And that failed, which then therefore, based on my quick read here, identifies that it would be in substantial conformance.
All right, I think unless there is an improved vote or a compromise that makes sense. And frankly, I off the top of my head cannot imagine what a compromise between approval and disapproval would be. So I'm willing to leave it at that. Perhaps, Mr. Barnes?
Through the check, can I ask a question to the applicant?
Yes, please.
So question to the applicant. So question to the applicant. Uh, what is your opinion about the incongruency or the incompatibility per se of metal in shingle? So if you were to just for a moment put aside the ability or non-ability to put solar up or uh, soundproofing related to, you know, um, metal versus, you know, shingle, what is your take on the compatibility and is there a path for making it more compatible?
Uh, we've done several proposals where we've actually mixed both materials. And usually the metal standing seam roof is more of an accent or a, a modern element rather than a first level and a second level. So I can see um, where there might be concern about using both on two main roofs, but I've seen them both mixed together. Um, again, we're trying to go with that, have those modern um, splashes and elements to um, a, a more traditional homes. So um, from that aspect, I, I don't see um, having both being an issue, um, especially when the second roof is, is so far from, from sight. And maybe making both main roofs and just having the awning be a metal awning um, would be something that we would look at if that's something you would consider.
If it's okay through the chair, Mr. Mr. Kale, curious if you have um, any thoughts on compatibility? Given that there, there's going to be two elements. If you can't have, if you're gonna have to have two elements, do you have any thoughts on ways in your uh, design ethos to make it more compatible rather than less?
Uh, I'm agreeing with what I, I think I just heard that it works well when there's one dominant material and then there's an accent material. But when it's a sort of a fifty fifty split, it's kind of an odd way to approach it. And it just feels uh, disjointed and, and I, I wouldn't recommend it.
But leaving an accent, for instance, over the garage there. As you look at the front elevation, there is that part that's over the garage, leaving that as an accent and then going, I thought I heard Ms. Felver propose the two uh, dominant roofs being comp and then just over the garage being metal. Is that what you heard? Was that what I heard, Ms. Felver?
Yeah, I mean, that would be something that we, we'd consider.
And, and, and Mr. Kale, would that help in your opinion?
I, I guess the only problem I see is that it's, it's, it's not an isolated area and it's not something you necessarily want to highlight with an accent. Uh, the garage, you want to highlight an entry perhaps. Um, plus it's still connected to the roof over the entry. So I'd see, then you'd have a, a valley coming together with a composition roof and a sheet metal roof and it, that even seems to be more problematic than separating it by upper and lower. So I, I, I have to say that's not a great solution.
Yeah, I can see that. Okay. I am, sorry, Ms. Felver, I have nothing to offer you other than you're, you're in substantial conformance. Um, and you're just gonna stay top roof. Mr. Riggs?
But I'll just clarify, um, Ms. Silver, were, were you, uh, Ms. Felver? Were you speaking of uh, the accent over the, over the window to the right of the entry or are we talking about over the garage?
Um, the accent awnings, uh, one would be over the window on the right-hand side. Um, the other over the pop-out on the second floor. Thank you. Those are um, accents that we've had. We've also used the accent as um, part of the first story. Um, in this case, the first story is over the garage and um, what you would see from uh, the right-hand side and the left-hand side over that uh, those front gables. So you would see that on um, from the side views. Um, as you could, you can see part of the standing seam roof coming up um, from those front gables. Yeah. Where the cursor is, yeah, there we go. Um, so it, it is more of an accent in this case because it is on the, you'd see it just from the garage from a front perspective. You would see it for coming down the street a little bit um, on the left and right-hand sides. Um, so that's what I meant by accent. Making them both um, composition shingle or asphalt shingle um, is making it more uh, makes it match the first, the second story. But again, um, we've done both and we've used them as accents on, on the first level and on, onings before.
So using the word accent somewhat more traditionally, if your only standing seam metal were over the window to the right of the entry and the window above the bay, above the garage, uh, would that be a suitable architecture in your point of view? And a suitable project?
Yes, we've, we've, yes, we've proposed that for um, other projects. Um, trying to blend the traditional with the modern elements.
So Mr. Kale, I think that's a bit of what I was suggesting earlier that it's, there's quite a history to putting a metal roof over a bay or um, or an accent area where a more uh, where a different roof is the dominant roof, whether it be a slate roof from the nineteenth century or a shake roof from the twentieth century. Uh, the metal would have been uh, used um, more, in a more targeted way for a small area.
Are you asking?
I'm asking i- if, if you agree that that would be a compatible use of the two materials where, in other words, nearly all of the roof is uh, is uh, asphalt shingles.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with that. Um, showing those two areas which are pop-out um, bays, which would definitely make sense to have an accent over those two areas and highlight those. Um, I, are you suggesting all asphalt shingles except for those two areas? And can we make that change tonight as a commission?
Uh, that's what I'm opening up uh, with and then we'll go to Mr. Prada to see if we've been sufficiently, if we have sufficiently noticed. But my, I suspect that since this was anticipated to be a staff level change, that uh, that might be possible. So at least to open the question. So Mr. Prada, it looks like uh, at least a couple of us uh, would be receptive to changing uh, what I'll call ninety percent of the roofing to asphalt shingle rather than changing fifty percent of it.
So I, I think um, a couple of things from, and I, I might want to pull Ori up here to um, talk about the changes themselves. If those are things that staff would have found to be in substantial conformance, I think the planning commission could tonight kind of, you know, state as you are that those, those changes could be acceptable. Um, you may not necessarily need to vote on it formally. Uh, although I think we are getting into a little more discussion than I think is anticipated for a substantial conformance determination. So I am cautious of that um, post-failed vote, how much discussion has been going on. But I, I also wanted to allow the commission to talk through it since there is a possibility that a second motion could be made. Um, um, so with that all being said, I, I think, turning to Ori, if these are item changes that we would find to be in substantial conformance, I, I think we could we could take your direction. I, I don't think we should be adding changes to the project at the dius here, given the focus nature of a substantial conformance memo. But if you're in the context of this project identifying that these changes could be allowed, that's something that we can take with another building permit revision. Does that make sense?
Is that a question to me? It does make sense to me. That was a question to me.
Oh, okay. So.
I'm sorry, I questioned the multiple people.
So Mr. Prada. Potentially, uh, could we continue this discussion of substantial conformance uh, to another meeting? With the anticipation that the substantial conformance might come back with asphalt shingles? Um, except for the two, uh, we'll call them awnings over the accent windows.
So thinking about a little more, and this may somewhat contradict what I just said. I, the, the focus is really on the changes at hand, whether they're substantially conforming or not. And so I think continuing it with direction is getting into the realm of needing to publicly notice it through a use permit revision. I think, I think the, the question for the commission is really, is it in substantial conformance or not? And i- if, if you're saying no, which, which right now the vote was that it was not and it failed, so it is. If you're adding some additional context to that saying, these changes would also be acceptable, I think that's okay. But if you're continuing it, you're, you're kind of continuing it to a public meeting. And I, I think at that point, we really need to take it through a use permit revision process. We really should be focused on just the, the design at hand tonight. And I apologize if that's somewhat different than what I just said, but as I thought about more, we're definitely getting into the realm of of designing and changing the project in a different way than the conformance memo process anticipates.
Well, I was trying to be a little more artful than that and uh, continue it for a clarification of um, what was being requested. But I don't know that that's really necessary. Uh, and um, I think uh, if per what you just said, that uh, we've given the advice that um, changing all the roofing except the two accents would also be acceptable. I think potentially we could move forward with that. Uh, and you probably don't need anything more than consensus on that, right? Or, or do you want to vote?
No, I, I think, I don't believe the commission needs to vote unless it wants to vote. Um, your vote would then be a motion, I, I don't want to speak for the commission here, but you could do something that, that is a motion that this is in substantial conformance and would be even with a change to asphalt shingles on the lower roof. Um, I think that could be acceptable. Um, that is within the kind of realm of tonight's focus of substantial conformance. Um, it's the continuation that starts to make me concerned.
Okay. Good advice. So first, let me see if we need to vote. Uh, is there anyone who feels that we need to take a formal vote? Or do we have in essence consensus that they could make that alternative change as well? Any?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, um, so uh, Ori, I think we'll leave it at that if that's okay with uh, with you and Kyle.
Uh, yes, so I'll just restate, my understanding is that the commission has found that the project is in substantially in conformance with the previous approval and would be even if they changed the roof on the, the lower floor to a um, comp shingle and only kept standing seam as an accent on those uh, those features, the bay features.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm seeing nodding heads, so I think we'll just move ahead from there. Or we'll, actually, we will close the item with that. Having already had a failed vote and clarified. And so that takes us, and congratulations to um, TJ Holmes and Ms. Felver. That takes us to informational items. So Mr. Prada, I see you have a, a couple of updates and then I also have a request at the end.
Sure, so uh, looking at the list here, so the February eighth is the next meeting. And on that meeting, we have the fifteen forty El Camino Real project, uh, architectural control revision request for that item. That, that is the only item on that meeting uh, coming forward. So um, stay tuned for that. We don't have set agendas for the next upcoming meetings um, at this time. There is one additional item that I should have mentioned for the council meeting tomorrow that I was looking through the agenda a little more closely and there's actually a proclamation recognizing former planning commissioner Catherine Strel. Uh, so that might be of interest uh, to the planning commission to tune in uh, for her proclamation. It'll be at the start of the meeting. So um, if you're interested, I'd encourage you to, to attend. I, I certainly will, will try to make time now to make sure I, I hear the proclamation. So with that, that concludes my reports and announcements.
Alright, thank you. And then could I just clarify, uh, the third regular meeting you indicated is March twelfth? I, I may have a, a discount uh, calendar, but um, I've got March twelfth as a Friday.
I believe that's March twenty-second. Can we get the agenda back up real quick?
So that should be March fifteenth.
March, March. Yeah, okay, that's, yeah.
That's my error.
Okay.
Hang on.
Got it. And then
Thank you.
And then just one uh, one request. This project uh, sort of re, this, I'm sorry, the study sessions tonight sort of reinforced to me the difficulty in having our package be entirely digital. It's nowhere near uh, as convenient during the meeting to refer to colored renderings and colored plans uh, while the screen is filled with the go-to-meeting platform. Not to mention that manipulating through the plan during the, the meeting is not optimal. Uh, for some of us, it's also um, convenient to have those plans under an elbow to study, make marks on. And I don't mean necessarily an entire presentation. I mean, when we get to discussing the projects, I think we rarely discuss fire access or square footage calc's or um, property line adjustments. But there are usually half a dozen pages of eleven by seventeen, um, you know, pre-COVID that were very useful to refer to. Is it possible to ask, is it possible to make available to those who are interested to have plans, renderings and elevations? That's architectural plans, not um, calculation plans. Or uh, uh, fire truck access plans or utility plans. But uh, to at least have the colored plans, elevations and renderings as a miniaturized package for these larger projects.
In terms of hard copies delivered?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? So, so that I can certainly check on that. It, it's definitely difficult and there's a reason why we're, we're doing everything digitally. I mean, it, it, we're not in the office. Most of our work is done remotely at this point. And so mailing them out with the packet may also be difficult. We're also not getting hard copies currently from applicants. Everything's being submitted digitally through our Acela system um, or emails. So we, we do have some limitations uh, given the COVID protocols are in place. Um, but I hear what you're saying and, and I'm happy to look into it and provide a better response. Um, you know, probably. You know, probably through Carina, the liaison.
Could I prompt that, I don't have an 11 by 17 color printer here myself, and when I need to print something, I digitally send it to a print destination, and it doesn't have to be a 20th century blue printer, it can be staples. And they will put the pages together and staple them and do the numbers that you want. They that would only leave picking up the seven copies or three copies, depending on who actually asked for them, and dropping those off on the front step of the way was done before, which was contactless, I'll point out. So I don't think it's as big a hurdle as it, as it might initially seem. So that's my request.
I, I'll certainly look into it with our staff.
All right. Thank you.
Through the chair, through the chair, before you close the meeting, if I could just clarify one thing, so the, the March meeting, the first one is actually March 8th, so that's the Monday. And then the next one after that would be March 22nd, so that calendar is on the website, and we'll make sure to update the agendas going forward, so that on the next meeting, you'll see March 8th, March 22nd, okay?
And, and we all do have copies of those, as I recall, at least I printed mine out. And I can't resist adding to my request for rather few 11 by 17s, I end up printing at least the agenda and certain elements of the, of a larger project. And I think I may not be the only volunteer commissioner who is buying ink and paper for, in the name of his city. So I'm going to be a little bold in asking for those 11 by 17s. All right, so thank you all, we made it before 11. Hearing is adjourned at 10:55 PM. Good night.
Thank you, good night.